Welcome to the Mountain City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 14th, 2024 at 6 o'clock. Can we rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got our agenda. Do we have any amendments?
No amendments.
Okay. We got our agenda. Does someone want to approve that? You get a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, you got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. All right, and then we got our consent agenda, number four. Does anybody want to go through those items?
Do that. So item number four, consent agenda items are A, approved payment of claims, B, approved minutes from July 23rd regular meeting, C, approved resolution approving certificate of completion for 3053 Brighton Boulevard, D, 2023 lift station improvements pay request number six, and E, 2024 seal coding pay request number one.
All right. Does anybody want to talk about any of those? Paul?
I make motion that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Okay, you got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember McEnany?
Present.
May you, um, aye or nay, please?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Pew?
Aye.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Mayor Holt?
Aye.
All right, all that passes, so if you're here for that, we're good. All right, number five, comments and suggestions from anyone present that the item is not on the agenda? If you want to come up. All right, hearing none. We're going to go to number six. Planning Commission recommendation, it's planning case number 24-07. It's a public hearing, review of conditional use permit for new slash replacement of the library at 2079 Commerce Boulevard.
One second. All right, good evening, mayor members of the council, members of the public. I'm Rita Trapp, a planning consultant for the city. I'll be walking through the conditional use permit request for the new replacement library. The property is located on a through lot that accesses both Commerce Boulevard on the east and Bel Air Lane to the west. Currently, there is a little library building, as everybody knows, and there are two connected parking areas, and the library was built in 1972. So Hennepin County has decided it is time to demolish and reconstruct the library. The intention is to reuse portions of the site, not necessarily the building, but there are part of the parking area and the drive aisle along the southern boundary that the applicant is interested in reusing. The intent of the project is to meet modern community needs and also to meet Hennepin County's green initiatives. So things like a net energy zero, a net zero energy building, green roof, biofiltration, retention of trees. Those were really important elements for Hennepin County, and that does factor into some of the site plan decisions that they made, which we'll be discussing as we walk through the requests this evening. As I said, the request is for a conditional use permit. We need a conditional use permit for two reasons. One is a local government building is a conditional use in the R2 district, which is what this is zoned. And we have determined that it's best to process this as a planned unit development because there are a number of areas where the reuse of the building and the site, I mean, the reuse of the site for this building doesn't really allow us to meet modern standards. And so I'll be outlining those as I review what is being proposed this evening of where the planned unit development will allow flexibility to certain elements of the zoning code. As I somewhat referenced, the area is guided public or institutional in the comprehensive plan. So this is one area where the comprehensive plan and the zoning are slightly different. In the comprehensive plan, we're a little bit more specific to better demonstrate where in the community there are places of worship or institutional buildings. So we actually do show that this is a public or institutional use. You can see that there is residential to the north of it. There's actually a place of worship to the south. And so those are factors as we look at site plan proposals for this library. The zoning is a little bit different with the zoning because we are talking specific districts. It can be challenging to have a public or institutional zoning district. So we have reverted back to the more common practice of having a residential district that does allow government buildings such as this with a conditional use permit. So as you can see from this, this area is zoned R2. The place of worship to the south is actually zoned mixed use downtown, so it's right on the edge of the downtown area. This just provides a site plan. It shows a little bit about how they're orienting the site. So you can see the parking area and drive aisle along the southern boundary. You can see the building. And then they are focusing on trying to create areas or kind of places for the visitors to enjoy different areas of the site. So I just wanted to highlight that a bit. As I had referenced, there will be different types of green features. So on the left side, you can see the green roof. Probably use this. The green roof, there will be solar panels. This talks about some of the bio retention facilities that they are providing. The green roof obviously would drain and go into some of the landscape areas. That's one of the big elements is how they want to treat stormwater on the site, and it is a factor again in the site plans themselves. I'm going to walk through some of the traditional elements of the zoning code to just comment on a few areas. Relative to setbacks, each of the frontages, both on Bel Air and Commerce, are subject to a 20-foot setback, which they are meeting. The north and south sides of the lot are side yards, and they are subject to a 10-foot setback, which again, they are generally meeting. The one area where we do have a setback issue is that parking areas are required to be at least five feet from adjacent residential properties. The current parking lot and the proposed parking lot, because they are not proposing to change that, is actually only located one foot from the southern property line. And so that affects this area where we're adjacent to the residential property. So that is one area where the PUD is helping with that flexibility because again, they want to retain the existing parking and driveway area. Relative to building height, they are proposing currently, my understanding is a height of 32 feet, eight and a half inches. The maximum allowable height is 35 feet. You'll see my note in blue, originally, the building was more than 34 feet, but after, between the planning commission meeting and this meeting, they have made some revisions. I believe in part to respond to some of the neighbor concerns to the north about shadowing and about the impact. But the applicant can provide more information on the why for the change, but they are lowering, as far as I'm aware, the building height by two feet. Either way, they were always within what was allowed, but I do want to just recognize where they are making changes so that you are aware of those. Relative to parking, they are proposing to reduce the accesses from three to two. So there will be retained the access on Commerce. There used to be two accesses on Bel Air, and they will only retain the southern access point. The northern parking area will be converted to storm water. The parking spaces required, they are meeting that requirement with 29 spaces. However, it had been noted from the planning commission that there is a concern about the parking spaces being reduced from 48 stalls to 29. And I will talk about that when we get to the planning commission comments. The conversion of the existing drive aisle to two-way for the entire distance. So this, just to note, used to be a one-way in portions of it, and then two ways in other portions. It will now be completely two-way. The code requires 25 feet. The proposed width is only 22 feet. It is challenging to make adjustments to that. Again, this is an existing condition. The impact, if we were trying to have some type of change relative to that width, would be to needing additional retaining walls and cutting into the hillside and affecting some of the trees that are on the immediate north of this area. So in this vicinity, there is topography and existing trees that would be impacted if we would require that 25-foot width. There are challenges. 22 feet is challenging from a turning radius, packing in and out, especially as you have people moving through that area. But it is doable. So it's just something I wanted to note, and again, part of why we're doing a planned unit development for this project. Also of note, relative to the parking stalls themselves, technically, code requires ADA stalls to be 12 feet by 20 feet. They are only proposing 12 feet by 18 feet. We did reach out to the building official who did state that they are actually meeting the building code, so the official rules about ADA parking stalls. So this is something that we require that's not required actually from the building code itself. The building code now is concerned about having a minimum amount of access aisle between the spaces. So we're talking this area. They are more concerned about that than they are about the depth of the spaces, and they are meeting that requirement. So again, that's covered with the planned unit development.
Can you clarify that last part again?
Yes.
So they're less concerned with the depth of the space because that's meeting normal building requirements?
So the, yes. The 12 by 18 will meet the building code and the ADA accessibility. They are concerned that this is wide enough so that there is space for movement. So this hatched area that's between. So that maybe, I would guess that 12 by 20 is a historical remnant of how things used to be, and things have evolved over time. So again, that can be accomplished through the planned unit development. And that's why we reached out to the building official because they really are the ones who are the most knowledgeable about current ADA requirements.
So that is wide enough. It's just the spots are a little shorter?
They are a little shorter, two feet shorter than our code requires. But they are meeting the standards. That is typical.
Cool. Rita, with the hash area, does it have to be that big?
Has to be 96 inches in width.
And that's what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
I would feel better saying that if I actually could zoom in and see that number. My eyes aren't that great, but the building official said it was fine, so they are meeting that requirement. Landscaping. In terms of landscaping, the applicant is proposing to maintain a majority of the existing mature trees on the site. I'm not saying they're keeping everything, but they are keeping a lot, and it does factor into the site plans that they are proposing. A lot of the trees that are being retained will be retained on this portion of the site. They are also proposing new trees, so 15 new trees, as you can see, three of which will be coniferous. They're going to preserve 14 trees, seven of which will be coniferous. The code requires a quarter of them to be coniferous, and they're proposing 42%. So generally, in terms of the number of trees, they are meeting the requirements. The only issue that we have slightly is that the code requires two and a half inch caliber instead of, they're proposing two-inch caliper trees. I'll be honest, that typically in my, in our firm, what we work with our landscape architects, we're not requiring two and a half caliper as much anymore. One is availability and survivability. So we double-checked with our landscape architects, and that's not something that they found to be of concern. But it again, is not meeting the code, so that's why the planned unit development is the right tool. So that's another area of flexibility. Hardcover wise, the code does allow 40% hardcover for a lot of record. The existing hardcover, so what's already on the site, is 47%. With the proposed site plan that they have today, we're actually seeing a reduction to 44%. Part of those reductions are coming from the removal of the second parking area. We're also seeing the addition of the green roof. And then the treatment is going to be through biofiltration with swales. And as you're familiar, this is something that both the city engineer and Minnehaha Creek Watershed District will get involved with in terms of making sure stormwater is managed adequately on the site. And that, right now, everybody is comfortable with how it is today. And so that's one of the elements that is impacting kind of the overall site plan on where elements are, is making sure that we can have not only these features, but also have the education that kind of goes with it because they want to tell the story about that as well. Screening, there is screening required between the parking lot and the residential home to the south. Again, it's kind of hard to see, but it's definitely hard to see on that one. This is the fencing. So the residential home is on this part of the property, and they are required to have that. So they are showing a concrete and wood slat fence on the majority of the property line. There are breaks, some breaks shown, and that might be some plantings. They also have had thoughts and discussions with the church to the south. And so those breaks would allow a connection between the two. So if there is the ability to have a shared parking agreement, there would be a place where you wouldn't have to walk out to Commerce and come back at the library. So those breaks are kind of providing a few purposes. Lighting, all existing lighting is supposed to be removed, and new lighting will be added along the edges of the parking area, along the pathway. Applicant knows that they cannot shed light on other residential properties or roadways. So kind of our typical lighting statement. And then signage, there will be one monument sign. There'll be a small LED part of it, which doesn't show up very well, but in this vicinity, the open-close kind of idea. It is meeting the 10-foot setback, and the heights do meet the requirements of the R2 district. So that's something that they are able to meet the requirements. We have distributed this as typical for our process. We really only received one comment, and that was from MCES, who said they don't have any facilities in this area, so have no comments. So generally, we don't have any feedback from any of the agencies, staff, consultants, so any concerns? The planning commission did review this at their July 2nd meeting. There were a few areas of discussion that I'll walk through with you this evening, and the applicants have provided responses to those, and they were included in your packet. So areas of discussion from the planning commission, parking. There was a concern that there weren't enough spaces, particularly on busy event days. The diagonal, they asked if there might be a potential of diagonal parking on Bel Air, kind of similar to what's outside City Hall, just to add a little bit more capacity. There was also a request for information about snow storage since we already were seeing a reduction in the number of parking spaces. They didn't want to see those parking spaces taken up by parking in the, or by snow in the winter time. There was a question about a drive-through or remote book drop because right now, you will need to park and get out of your car in order to add a book drop, or to drop off a book in the library. There was a request for information about the temporary library location. And then there were neighbors that attended, and I believe they are here this evening again, so they may want to have a conversation with you as well. Those neighbors, there was two different neighbors in particular. One who expressed concern about the tree removal, and whose trees were they? And then also the building height and shading. And so there was a meeting that occurred, and I'll provide a little bit of feedback from the library, but the applicant, or the neighbor may have some additional information for you. And then another neighbor is particularly interested in stormwater and making sure stormwater is adequately managed just given how stormwater is currently moving on this site, in their neighborhood, and on their property. Ultimately, the planning commission recommended approval, but they did ask the applicant to respond to those areas of concern because they felt like the project was reasonable. It seemed like it was moving forward, but they really were concerned about those areas. And so the applicant has spent the time between the July 2nd and this meeting trying to respond to those comments. So a few, I can add, I can tell you, I can summarize what they provided, but if there's specific questions, they would be the best to answer. So on the interim library location, I know, I believe, my understanding is they're working on a location in Mount for that temporary interim library. They can provide more information about where that's headed. Relative to the drive-through and remote book drop, that's really determined not to be feasible without significant site alterations. As you know, it's one strip of driveway and parking, so it's really hard to find a place where a box could be. And they don't really do remote book drops because of the nature of the manual labor that's involved in the safety of their employees. So that was in your packet, and certainly, they can provide more information if you have questions about that. Parking counts, they did on their own. That wasn't something requested by the planning commission. They did do some parking counts. I believe they started in mid-July, and they provided, had done parking counts all through right up until we prepared the packet. There may be some additional. They did it, I believe it was five times today to just check in. And they really found the only place that they really had a lot of vehicles was during an event. And they had 26, and they have 29 spaces. Again, that might be something to have more conversation with them about, but they did try and provide a little bit more understanding of usage of the site. They are continuing to explore opportunities to lease parking from the church to the south. They did explore adding parking along Bel Air. The concern is really the site impacts in terms of impervious surface. That would have to increase. They'd have to do changes to stormwater management. So again, the city engineer is here, which is a good bone to me because he can answer any questions about stormwater management that I can't. But if you have more questions, they would be the right people to talk to about that. They did submit, and we provided in your packet, locations for additional snow storage, which were at the west end of the parking lot, as well as, if needed, closer to the entrance area. There are different entrance walkways, and that's because there's a landscape feature. And so they're kind of, it's not a traditional sidewalk all the way. In this vicinity, it's not just a paved area. There's actually specific areas that you would walk into the library, and in between, there's landscaping that they would be able to use snow storage with. The, as I referenced, they did meet with the neighbor. They have adjusted the building height. This diagram was provided to you. This shows two different things. One, this red line is the original location, and they have lowered the building height by two feet. And they did prepare shadow studies, which we did include. And the purpose of shadow studies is to show what is the impact of a building on a particular piece of property. And I knew it wasn't going to translate, but you did receive that in your packet. And so they can provide information about that, about how that is going to, what is the existing shadow from the library today and what is proposed as a result of the new building. Relative to the public hearing, which is what we are holding this evening, the typical notification requirements were held. Everybody within 350 feet were notified of the public hearing this evening. And staff did receive or have a conversation with one neighbor who asked for clarification about stormwater. And so that's something I'm prepared, I have a graphic, but the city engineer would be able to better answer that. So when we have an opportunity, it would be good if he could walk through if that is of concern. I'm just going to keep going, and then we'll come back maybe to the stormwater. So this evening, we're just asking you to hold the public hearing and discuss the requests. And then we did provide in your packet a resolution of approval with findings and conditions. So if you are finding the project acceptable, if you could make a motion to approve that resolution. Otherwise, your other two options is a motion of denial, but we'd need findings of fact to explain that, or tabling the request if there's additional information you need or things that you want the applicant or staff to work on in order for you to further consider the request. With that, I think, the stormwater. I was going to have Matt talk a little bit about it because there was a concern about stormwater. Do you want to come up here? And I know that graphic is not great.
All right. So there's a couple of stormwater features, and I might miss some of them. But in general, everything is going to get caught off the roof and off the parking lot and either kind of run along the outsides of property. Here, there's a swale. I think it's a little different now. But then it'll all go to this rain garden here that is set a little bit lower than the existing property boundary here now. That should all, in general, that's going to soak in. I think the, it's hard to see there, but I think the emergence, the high water level is lower than emergency overflow or right around there. And even if it does ever need to emergency overflow, it's going to go out to the street and go into the stormwater catch basin there. And then as far as the, like the rates now, because of, right. So they're slightly actually reducing the overall impervious, and they're adding in the rain garden here for treatment. So the discharge rates, the amount of water that's going to run off of the site is drastically reduced. I think in the 100-year storm event, so like the 1% chance every year that you get a giant, a massive storm, I think it was reduced by eight cubic feet per second I was just looking at. So it's going to, far less is going to leave the site now than it currently does. Think that is?
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's specifically, I can't say.
Well, I have a quick question, Matt, that you might be able to answer. And Sarah and Rita, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the reasons we talked about on Bel Air in the planning commission meeting for just some quick additional parking, kind of like we have at City Hall, to be able to pull in kind of an angle on Bel Air and just run in to return your book or whatever, not to take up valuable parking places. And I think, I just heard you say it's stormwater. I know there may be some other additional costs, but the stormwater was a bigger problem. Can you talk to that at all?
Yeah, so that would add to the amount of impervious surface that would take them.
But it's already there, the impervious surface. It would just be, well.
No, it's, so it needs to actually kick out.
You'd have to go in a little bit.
There's not enough room on Bel Air right now. That's basically a standard width city street. So they need to come off of that and then go a few feet into their property boundary in order to make, to get some parking in there.
Okay.
And so then that adds to the additional, that adds to hardcover, adds a little bit of stormwater, kind of makes it harder for them to hit the net zero goals that they're shooting for.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to finish.
If there's any other questions, I can answer.
But we could, you could still park on the street.
Yes, it was just if you did the diagonal, you'd have more that you could fit in the same location.
But you can still stack.
Yes. It was the idea of the, kind of like City Hall where for every, if you do a, whatever.
The street's not big enough for that.
A 10 by 12 spot, you'd get two cars for every one car you'd get without it.
Right.
I'm just totally making that number up, but Matt didn't come over and tell me I was wrong, so we'll go with it.
I should know this, but you can park on the west side or the east side?
I think the east side.
Library side or the east side?
It's the east side of Belmont, so closest to the library.
Right.
Yeah, so really, you'll be able to park right there.
You're saying, like on the east side, you could park there, drop off, yeah.
So you could just park there. I mean, I'm saying if you run out of parking spots up there.
You could parallel park.
You can parallel park on the street on the east side and then walk up. Yeah, okay. Does council have any questions for Rita?
I don't know if I do yet. I'm just kind of curious. So like, we're going to do, Rita, if you have more to say. And then we're going to do, is the public hearing next?
Yeah.
We can discuss further.
Yeah, after Rita, then we'll go public, and then we'll bring it back to us.
Okay, I don't know.
Do you want the applicant to come up next or after the public?
Or yeah, actually, at that.
That was my question, yeah.
But before we do that, I do have questions.
Sure. Is there a specific topic? I'm trying to figure out what graphic to have of.
Yeah, so, I mean, we just talked about parking, but yeah, that's a good one.
Oh, good.
So, you know, am I, we're hitting, they're hitting a minimum. They're hitting what they have to hit.
They're hitting what code says.
What code says?
Which is not an exact science.
Right.
Yes.
And then again, beyond that, there is plenty of room on Belmont.
And then if they're hitting over a minimum by three, are they?
26 to 29. Yes, that would be the math.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, of course, the church might do some kind of lease situation on a big event night or.
Yeah, and that was something, I don't know where the status of those conversations are. I know that those were underway, but.
And then you said about the parking width.
It's the drive aisle width.
Just the normal parking spots?
What I was saying, which one? The normal?
Just the normal, not the handicap one?
Those are all fine. It's the drive aisle, this part?
Oh, that's what I meant, yeah.
Though, that's narrower by three feet than what we would require by code.
Okay.
So it's not our ideal. It's doable, but it's going to, people are going to have to be thoughtful and slow.
Right.
Getting in and out. But there's really, there's limited opportunity to make that adjustment unless we're willing to lose some trees and really push back on pushing into the hillside a little bit more because there's actually a hill in this vicinity.
But can't, I mean, can't they do maybe some of it tighter over there and some of it a little bit more relaxed over there?
Generally, you try and keep parking stalls the same.
Yeah.
With, like the drive aisle would be the same all the way along instead of being different, but I suppose you could.
I mean, I have a big truck, so maybe I'm counted out. But it sucks parking in tight spots, right?
Yes.
And trying to get out of there. I mean, a lot of people have SUVs and trucks and Teslas. You figure it out, okay. Or I'll go park on the street.
I'm a truck driver.
Yeah, you're a truck driver, yeah.
So, yeah, we spend every day managing, trying to get in and out of parking ramps.
Yep. And that's, I mean, we, staff had the conversation. I know, I believe, my understanding is the team had, the architectural team had the conversation. We had the conversation. It's the balancing of which priority is more important because it affects, for sure, it affects, one of the trees would have to come out. At least one, probably a couple of existing trees we would have to lose. And so what's the trade-off for the green components? It's not as simple.
But they can't make it up somewhere else?
Well, I mean, not really because you're.
Well, it's a really gigantic established tree.
Oh.
You're losing the big oak tree and one of the smaller coniferous trees at least. And then you're also pushing into the hillside more, so retaining wall, you know. So again, that's one of the challenges, is no site is perfect when you do reuse. You're not starting fresh, and so which is the more important of the things for you and for them?
And then, again, you said the ADA is meeting the current requirements, but you said our code is outdated?
Potentially, because that, when we actually went to the building official and they said there wasn't an issue, that would indicate that our code potentially is outdated.
So it should be wider than 96?
No, our code doesn't need to. No, our code doesn't need to stay twenty feet in length for an ADA stall.
It needs to be eighteen.
It could just be eighteen and that would be sufficient.
Okay, so we are good on that?
We are meeting, according to the building official, we're meeting ADA requirements.
Okay.
Which generally, what we say when we do parking normally is we say, you know, you have to meet whatever the building official says.
Right.
In terms of number of stalls, so they're our, our go-to for what the requirements are.
Okay, got two more questions. Uh, can you go to the, the hardcover screen? So I, I get that there are already forty-seven now, right?
Yes.
And we're going down to forty-four.
Yes.
But again, our code says forty.
Yes.
So either way, we're winning.
That's how we have applied that.
And then, of course, because of that, they're working extra hard on the stormwater issues.
Yes.
As, so...
Yes, our, our practice, and, and that's actually the rules in this state, if you have a non-conforming site, um, you know, you can maintain it, but then you can improve upon it. So our practice has been that we try and improve it, but we don't make people get all the way down to the forty percent. And what makes this site different is the fact that, um, if they were totally cleaning up the site, we might have a different approach, but because of the fact that we're retaining this area, um, people have a little bit more opportunity to maintain over the forty percent. And, um, also what's different is when you have a site like this, where they're managing stormwater actively, that's a different conversation. Um, typically, our hardcover numbers, like forty percent, thirty percent, are for residential property owners who aren't actively creating, um, infiltration basins and managing stormwater. So here, as long as Minnehaha Creek Watershed District are feeling that it's adequate, city engineer feels like it's adequate, the systems they're using, then we don't concern, aren't as concerned about that percentage.
Okay. Again, I do wanna make sure that people understand that, 'cause I do get calls and, and it's more on the residential side, obviously, since we're mostly residential, but...
Right.
You know, it's like, well, how did that property get, you know, hardcover easement or whatever? And it's like, I don't know, they voted on it, but, you know, first of all, we are coming down, so one thing, and then we're also treating, and, you know, the...
And they will have a managed system that they will be actively managing, which is a, a higher standard and, um, be, above and beyond, 'cause they will actually have to make sure it's been, it is working.
I think Matt had said, too, the net change in water leaving the site was going down.
Right. So the, yeah, the actual rainfall events, what they're able to, is going to be reduced.
Capturing. Uh, does anybody know, do they currently have a drop box for books?
Yes.
Yes.
They do. Okay. Remember, we talked about that originally?
Well, we've talked about it, I think, in every meeting, planning, this meeting.
So we can ask the applicant, but, um, I, I guess I'd like to know, I, I, I got the response and whatever, but, you know, how much is it actually used? Is it, is that a big deal or not? It'd be interesting, I don't know.
Drop box, how much it's used?
Yeah. This isn't kind of that little turnaround? Drop a book, I mean...
I, I can't answer that. I know the planning commission thought it was...
Put it in the box.
Right, yeah.
The planning commission thought it was pretty important, but there's also limits with the site.
Well, we, we kinda thought it was important, too, last time.
Right.
And that's fine if they don't wanna do it, but kinda, I guess the response of, you know, it's not suitable for employees to be, well, what are you doing now? Doesn't make any sense, but...
Oh, you mean about the employees being injured?
You know, well, are we, I mean, how are you handling it now? So anyway, I gotta ask them, but...
Yes, please.
I just thought that was interesting. Well, if we have one now, I get why we're not doing it, but maybe there's a better answer than, you know, what we got, I guess. Any other questions for maybe?
I have a concern, but it's somewhat off-site, so I'll, I'll leave it for later.
Okay.
Yeah, I think my questions will be after everyone has spoken.
Okay, all right. Do we wanna bring the applicant up?
Sounds great.
Thanks.
Yes.
Hey, can you give us your name and...
Sure.
Where you from?
Oh, I'm Lisa Bartels. I'm the project manager. I, um, work for Hennepin County in design and construction and, and managing the design and construction of this project.
Perfect.
Hi, I'm Jessie Baldrick. I'm an architect with Gensler.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Well, again, first of all, does anybody wanna ask some questions? I just had one.
Yeah.
If you wanna handle that.
I can speak to the book drop.
Yeah, please, please, yeah.
So, um, the, the current book drop is an opening in the side of the building that abuts the drive that, as it heads north-south. So the building is to the east. Is you're driving up to it, if you're in the driver's seat, you can't, you still have to get out of your car and put the materials in. So it isn't truly a drive-through book drop. It's certainly more convenient than having to, you know, walk up to a different part of the, the building. Um, as far as, uh, workplace injuries go, um, our library staff, so Hennepin County has nine thousand employees approximately. Um, and we track workplace injuries. This is not my area of expertise, but we get updates regularly in our library portfolio meetings. Um, and as I understand it, the, um, repetitive stress injuries among library staff are, there's a high incidence of that. Some of that is, is being addressed through automated material handling systems. Those systems actually connect to the through wall, the exterior through wall return slots.
What will be?
Um, it, correct, correct. We've, uh, the library and the county have been adding them, um, where at buildings that don't have them. So the new facility will be getting an automated material handling, um, system, and that, again, reduces workplace injuries. The only real opportunity for an exterior drive past book drop would kind of have the same situation where it would not be on the right side. And then, um, library staff are ha, would have to go outside through walks and everything with carts to get materials manually. So it just runs counter to trying to create a safe work environment for, um, for our staff.
Do you notice that, that book drop, is that pretty popular?
Um, I, uh, Kristen?
I guess you can.
Yes.
Could you come up and give us your name? The mic can't get you back there.
My name is Kristen Moline. I am the library supervisor at West Tonka. Um, so happy to be here. Thanks for asking me up.
Yeah.
The book drop, as it is right now, you, you drive up, again, it's on the wrong side, so you can't hand it out this way. You get out of your car, you open the slot and you put the books in. They go down a chute that's about this big into approximately three-by-three box, um, and the box gets, it lowers with more books, so the weight of the books makes those books go down farther. So as a staff person, we manually will have to lift those books out, carry them up to the service desk, or if they're, if it's overflowing, um, on a typical day, when we get there in the morning, we'll load them onto carts. So we're, we're handling them one way, we wheel onto the service desk, and then we put them all through, you know, the, the check-in process. That book drop is used quite a bit, um, but again, it's not something they can just drive up and put it in. You still have to get out of your car.
But usually, you have a passenger. I mean, I've always had my kids that...
Not everyone has, has a passenger.
No, that, that's true.
Yep.
But, but oftentimes, you have a passenger that's performing that task.
Yep. So to have that, to have a drive-up book drop that was not connected directly to the library would involve staff in all-weather rolling a cart out to that outside system and then loading the books up, putting it back in through the door, and then bringing it across to the service desk. So it would not only increase the workload, but you can damage materials in a snowstorm. Sometimes in the book drop, the way it is, books will come in wet if it's raining. So, um, that's my, that's just so you know how the book drop actually works.
Okay.
And the, the, that system that Kristen just described will be enhanced with, uh...
The AMH.
With an AMH system. So right now, their carts have a certain amount of automation and just that it goes down...
Right.
It, with the weight of the books and kinda comes back up as you remove the books, but the AMH system actually scans, it, it has a conveyor belt, it scans and sorts the materials, um, to a certain degree as, as they come in through and, and process. And so, um, and they, if there's a problem with the automated system, it'll, um, automatically close and open, uh, dead drop that returns to the type of drop that they have now. So there's a, a backup for that. So there will actually be three drop openings, one on the interior and then two on the exterior, that automated one and then the, the dead drop one.
And the ones that are on the exterior are under a cover porch, so they, you'll be, you know, the activity, the book, and you'll be undercover.
Yeah.
And the vestibule is really kind of a new thing out here, too. So there's, inside the vestibule of the building...
Thank you.
We're providing space for our self-checkout and holds books, so people will be able to swipe into the vestibule after library hours, and they will be inside the vestibule in order to pick up their holds books, and there's also a book drop in there.
Oh, great.
So that's an added feature that the current library doesn't have.
Okay.
Yeah, um, the library is calling it Open Plus, um, and they've piloted it at a couple locations. It's fairly new. It's not very widespread within the, um, forty-one library system of Hennepin County libraries.
Right.
Great.
So...
We learned a lot about that. Uh, any other questions?
Not yet.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And I guess, because we ask this every time, any idea when you will have an idea of when, where the temporary library is going to be and when it will take place?
We, we are in, we are in discussions, um...
That's what I would've said. I mean...
Yeah.
It sounds like we don't need to have it set up until January, so we're, not that we're dragging our feet, but I think we have an opportunity to be a little more deliberate about it, but I, I, I think we're gonna be able to do it at City Hall. We're just kinda working out the spacing and everything, and we get, it actually worked out really good because we can clear the elections. We were a little concerned with trying to put a library in a space where we're doing voting and everything, so, um, we've been...
It's, it's a mutual hope that this will all come together. It would be beneficial for the libraries.
I have a question about that now.
Yes.
Is this just for picking up books or dropping?
It is for, it is for holds, um, for picking up holds, so you can go online and order materials. You can also return materials that you've, um, picked up at that location or materials from anywhere within the library system.
But we will lose all access to the computers, which...
Um, there, I, um...
Margot, Scott was providing an update, some discussion about that.
All right, come up and give us your name.
Hi, I'm Margot Gaffin. I'm the facilities director for Hennepin County. Thanks, Lisa. Um, we learned from Scott, who is library director, and he's sorry he can't be here, he's out of town. Um, they are going to have storytime at St. John's. I don't think that there was a solution, an immediate solution, although there have been discussions with the school system on making sure that kids continue to have access to computers.
To computers, okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
All right. I think we're good, thanks.
We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna open the, uh, public hearing. So if you wanted to come up and give us your thoughts on that, come on up.
Hi, I'm Harry Emelius. I live at two zero six eight Bel Air Lane. So I border the property right to the north and to the west of the new upcoming library. Looking at the elevation of the pond, the floodwater pond, the rainwater pond that's gonna collect everything, I believe the lowest point will be nine hundred and forty-seven feet roughly. So the shallow area around it is gonna be nine hundred and forty-eight point six feet, um, above sea level, and then the highest point of the library, which is right at the corner of the building, is the...
The yellow.
The yellow.
The yellow one?
Yeah. So that right there is referring to this point. This line roughly is, uh, nine hundred and forty-nine point twenty-five. The berm that is going to be put in here approximately ten feet from the property line is going to be nine hundred, nine hundred and fifty-one, uh, feet. So it does maintain a good pond for all that water gathered through here, off of the roof, off of the green space, off of the somewhat parking area, the temporary, not a sidewalk, but a trail or a path, all will drain into here. I was curious, there's an existing drain right here, right now, so I'm, I'm wondering if all that water is going to go into that drain or if you have a different drain system set up for it to go into? And then with my property, sharing the, um, property line, my driveway butts up right up to it, there's a, I call it the moat, and water has been channeled throughout the whole part of my neighborhood by the city of Mound roughly in the eighties to come through, well, under my neighbor's driveway and then through my yard, the moat, and then around. So it does discharge or channel through Hennepin County's property. I was hoping or looking for a better way for that water to stay away from my driveway and/or what is going to be done in that area, 'cause there are buckthorn, apple trees and other, uh, trees in, along that property line. So they're all gonna have to come up to get rid of the buckthorn, which is an invasive deal, University of Minnesota, dah dah dah. Putting in a screen of trees there, I believe, is what it calls for on the print. Is that going to be, uh, evergreens or lilacs, or are you going to cut that? What, I believe the existing bank is nine hundred and fifty-one feet now. Ten feet back, that, it's, it's just kind of a big mess and it worries me. This rainy season that we've had, the water has come right up to my driveway, but should the rain garden or pond fail, that is going to spill over onto my driveway and into my house, and I don't think my subpumps will keep up with that. So that is a big concern of mine with the property line right here and the, the drainage of the water on the property.
And your house is by the corner?
My house, this is all of my property here, approximately two hundred feet by sixty feet this way, two hundred by sixty this way. So this whole back hill starts at about nine hundred and fifty-one feet, and it does drain into, it's lowered here for that manhole cover, plus the storm drains were added here, across the street here, across, around the corner, across the street here, and kitty corner diagonal from me here. So all the water does run to the end of my driveway, which is the skating rink in the winter. The, there is a ditch right here that runs also into that manhole, so I'm, I'm just curious, with this being the lower part of the rain to collect in there, where does So I'm just curious, with this being the lower part of the rain to collect in there, where does that drain to? What I'm gathering also is that 947 feet to the 951 feet berm, well, simple math, that's four feet. We get more than four feet of water. Guess who's swimming? Guess who's getting the call from homeowners insurance? Should I get flood insurance? Would you advise that? What else? What is the square footage of our pond area? How much per cubic square foot or per gallon does that hold? However, mathematically, you want to let us know. So with this rainy season also, we have gotten some rain. With the melting of the snow, that melts also into that area. So that is my concern. And that's all I got. Any questions or comments or concerns?
We'll respond to it in a minute. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to come up? Can you give us your name and address?
Hi there. Yep, Betsy Lang. I live on the island, but I'm also the property owner of 2073 Commerce. So I guess if I, I'm not sure how this one works.
Yellow.
Yellow, okay. This property here. So just wanted to give a little background on why I was at the planning meeting and why I'm concerned about this project. I'm excited about it, too. I do think it's a really cool project and I'm not trying to block anything here. I just wanted to explain kind of our story here. So I bought this property about six years ago. It's got like a 600 square foot house on it, pretty tiny, 110-year-old house. My mom's living there now. For the last few years, we've been developing plans to add on living space and a garage behind it to be able to use that property. So now looking back, we're kind of glad that we didn't because this building, the new building will be the full length of our property. So that's, you know, that wasn't originally expected when we bought it. The architectural firm, Gensler, did do some shading studies after the last planning meeting. And we were really, actually really grateful for that, to be able to see the, kind of the impact that we would have as well. It does, you know, there are going to be some significant differences along the length of the property. There are areas that will never cease sun. Parts of the year, the full property will be dark. So we're not going to be, you know, planning in the same way for our construction. I think if we do a project there, it'll have to be a full story higher, just to get reclaimed some of that light. So I don't really have a solution here for that. Just wanted, you know, wanted this group to be aware of our concerns and try to keep the lines of communication open, you know, for any kind of creative solutions we could have for being able to use some of that property in the future, not completely be in the shadows. But I really did want to recognize also the county with Lisa and with Bill at Gensler, they were really helpful in adjusting their plans. I think it's not going to change the, you know, the comfort and suitability of the library. I think it's, but it is a change that I think will be really positive for our property. So at least for the existing structure there now, I think it will be able to get some more light in that wouldn't have been possible if they hadn't made that change. So I really appreciated them listening to our concerns. We also did talk about some of the trees and I think, you know, it will depend on their, on the groundwork they do and whether they'll be able to keep some of those. But I do feel like they were receptive to our concerns, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Hey, can you give us your name and address?
Hello, my name is Johan Schumann-Danyasen. I live at 6039 Beachwood Road in Mound. So I have several questions, four questions, actually. The first one is, I was not sure I understood, will there be a walking drop-in drop box?
You can walk to the front door. It'll be under cover.
Okay, so, okay, perfect. The second, so I want to say I love the project. It's awesome that the library is going to be changed. My second question was about meeting rooms. Sometimes people go to the library also because they set up meetings, non-profit meetings. And I was wondering if there's going to be a temporary meeting room possibly?
Temporary while it's being built?
Yes, yes.
Well, again, I know the church was going to do some school, or sorry, the church was going to do some stuff for the programs and then another school for the computers. We're talking about offering City Hall or Centennial for some issues, depending on what we figure out in January. I mean, we could offer up some other space. I mean, we have space. We could make meeting rooms if we need them, like this room. We have upstairs a Centennial. I don't know how important that is, but yeah, I mean, we're open. We're trying to, we're trying to steward this, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for the answer. The third point is about reusing. So I want to stress that, you know, we're all trying to preserve the environment, prevent any garbage from coming. And that library being demolished will bring lots of material that could be reused. I was wondering if the Hennepin County has any plan for reusing materials like bookshelves, carpeting, rocks that are outside for the garden, stuff like that for the project, too, instead of just coming with a bulldozer and towing everything?
I don't know the whole answer, but I do know that they are reusing a big chunk of certain things. You know, like some of the beams.
Yeah, some of the lighting.
Yeah, and also if they could, maybe, you know, there's tons of shelving that they will not use in any library. Maybe some people will be interested, churches, other organization people would be interested in getting some shelving somehow.
Yeah, again, I've seen this a handful of times. And even when we went to the community participation before it was even like a thought, that's been a consistent thing from the start. But yeah, we can make sure that they know that or maybe get a response quick from them, too.
Thank you. And my last question is about the height of the building, unfortunately. So it's slated at 32 feet. So if we think that that is roughly 11 feet, that we three times that. Unless people have a terrible growth spurt, I don't think we need a 32-feet ceiling. Unless people, unless there's several floors. Are there going to be several levels in that library or only one floor?
Well, the highest portion of it is 32 feet. It's got some slanted roofs.
Should we go back to the rendering of the building? Because also that building is straight on the street. So 32 feet, if we look already at the stuff that's built on the Auditor's Road, it's already very high.
Well, that's 50, over 50 feet.
Yeah, but it's, 30 is pretty high. And that is straight. There's another one with a person for scale. There's one building, a side view when we see a little.
This one, Paul?
Yes.
What's the current height right now?
So if we see that, like, I don't know where the door would be, but I mean, the door has to be gigantic. And there's a lot of wasted space, which means also you have to heat up that space, which means waste of energy. Besides the fact that that building will be straight on the street and create an effect of, you know, it's big, it's massive, it's not really big.
So have you, have you heard any of the presentations before today?
No, so unfortunately, and I know there's been a planning commission about that.
No, 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 I'm not talking about us. I'm talking about, you got to hear from them. This thing's like the greenest thing you can make.
No, I know, but still, even if green is the, you have to heat up that space.
Again, you ought to listen to them.
I interrupted with the slants of the roof and the height of the ceiling. So the pitch and the angle that allows for the south sun to come into the skylights for natural.
That helps either.
Lighting. Therefore, that reduces the footprint on the electricity and so. So I get what you're saying, but I do get the.
But if you, if you look at the height, I mean, you can bring it down. I mean, it's massive and we already have a massive building. And I think it's going to really change the character of our city, especially there's no setback. It's not like something that would be like in the middle of the lot because of, you know, the way the land is and the trees that we want to preserve. And that's going to be straight on the street. And that's going to give a very bad aspect to our city. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, thanks, Johan.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
All right, anybody else?
Carrie Emelius, 2068 Bel Air Lane. The computers at the library right now, I believe the access to the internet is really important. So for a temporary library or room at the City Hall or access to the computers would greatly help out the community. I myself cut the cord a year ago. I can tell you what's on channel 2, 4, 5, and 9, and 11 right now because I got nothing else. So I also get over to the library and use it to print out something or get information on this and stuff. And so it is, it is very important and very necessary to have access to the internet for our community.
Can I ask the architect for the, hi. So do you know what the current height is of our existing library?
I don't know that I have, but I, while I'm sitting here.
Yeah, if you find it out, you got to come back up.
In the highest?
You got to, you got to come back up.
So the rough height is not consistent all the way. The, the portion of the library that is right along Commerce is at a lower height. That the 35-foot portion is along the north edge of the reading, the main reading area. So there's meeting rooms and mechanical areas that are inside of the building that face the street. So it really is in the middle of the block that you've got that mass and the height.
All right. Okay, so, but you are having meeting rooms in the new building?
So there will be three study rooms, one of which is a virtual meeting room. It'll be equipped with a computer that patrons would be able to use an app on the computer or a website, you know, like sign into Zoom and have a computer-based virtual meeting. And there is a community room as well.
And you're able to rent it out or?
The community room, you can go online and reserve, yes.
While I have you here, the unused, like, bookshelves and what Johan was saying?
Some of the interior, well, there's, there's two things. There, Gensler has planned reuse of some of the structural elements, the blue lamps, in the new facility. We are exploring reusing some of the interior decking. There's wood decking on the, in the ceiling. And the county has also, is, has a proposal from an organization called Better Futures for deconstruction, partial deconstruction. So we have proposals for removing, for salvage at other locations, whether they sell them, whatever, that's kind of up to them, of things like plumbing fixtures. They're interested in the wood fence along the south property. There are a variety of approaches that will be taken to salvage as much of the existing structure and accoutrements as possible.
Okay, and then access to the internet while it's shut down?
That I can't, in my position, I can't actually speak to. In libraries where we're refurbishing the existing library, we're able to keep that outdoor Wi-Fi open, but we won't have a building. So we won't have an IT closet and, yeah.
And again, we'll work with Jesse. And if it makes sense and it works out, I mean, throw a computer in, you know, a little area or something. Again, we'll work on that, but if that works out, at least we'd have one or two, maybe. Again, we're, we're trying to steward this through, so.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for them while we have them?
Just a quick comment that maybe you can answer, Jesse or Maggie, maybe you can answer. But there, for Johan, they have provided a really in-depth presentation. And I know we had the link on our website for a long time. And I'd encourage you to maybe listen to it because they do address a lot of what you brought up. And it might help reassure you that they've gone into some pretty great depths to make sure that they're not wasting anything.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Sure.
Matt, can you come up real fast? So the property, property in the north, I mean, if you pull up on the GPS, I don't know if you guys can do that, but like a Google Maps, like a street view? So I pulled that up when she was talking and I can definitely see what she's talking about. Are you able to street view it?
You can ask me some other questions while we're getting there?
Okay, well, let's skip to the shadow then. So I know we did the shadow study and, I mean, is there any? We don't guarantee shadows, right? We don't guarantee visual. I know people have come in front of us before and said, you know, my neighbor's building something and I can't see the lake anymore. And we don't have anything in our code that says that you get to see the lake or you get to not have a tree producing shadow, right? That's under our code. At the same point, I'm very glad that they did do that study. That was very nice to produce that. And it sounds like, wherever she is, that it, you know, you're pretty happy with it. But maybe just when, when they're building, try to save as many as you can, trees, so they can have their shadows. So this, yes, maybe not a great. Looks a lot better on my, on my computer, but. So this is the residence house that we were just talking about to the north.
That's an old picture. Those pine trees are.
Yeah. I have a really good one on my computer. Are you on Bing or?
I've got, this is a.
Get on Google Maps.
That's Bing. I don't know where this is.
Bing's too old.
Where am I?
Anyway, what, what I see is, you know, kind of a dip down there, kind of a, an area that can kind of collect. Yeah, but the other thing I do see, and maybe I'm wrong, is that the parking lot kind of hills down towards the street.
Oops.
And it sounds like, from what I'm seeing on the architect, and that's what I want to ask you, is, you know, you guys are going to cut away and make a big area for the water to go. And to answer her question, what are the odds that she would have, at least have worse of a problem than she has now? Or it really should even fix it, right? It should make a lot better. If the net water leaving the site is less.
It should be better.
The moat should stay lower, if we're, if that's correct.
Correct.
In that particular area.
Yeah, that's, sorry, I was reading some stuff on that while the shadow conversation was happening, so I missed part of it, but.
There's a benefit, I believe the pushback is going to be 10 feet. Roughly now it's about three feet. So it could allow for a wider area for the moat. I do have a picture of the water up to my driveway and my yard.
But in this particular area, there should be less water going to the area she was concerned about, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, can you go, just go down the street one click? Yep, just click one time there. Yep.
I guess.
And now, now, just a second. So now can you, yeah, right there. So see the little indent there, the little moat? And then that's the property, the library, right? So that's that little dip, I think. And again, remember, this whole parking lot's going to be a big hole for the.
Right.
You know, for it to collect water. With the berm. So I guess what I'm seeing or hearing is how close to that property line or that little indent, does it start going right down into that hole? So it collects the water. What are the odds that she's going to actually have water coming into her driveway?
Much less than it is now.
Okay. That's what I want to hear.
Yeah, so this is the, what I wanted to, to share with you. So the emergency overflow is 949.25. So that's going to be the elevation right here between the berm, between the, kind of the higher points that wrap the rain garden, the high water level. So that's at the, at the 100-year peak is 948.6. So at kind of our most normal worst-case scenario is it's not going to go over the top of that. At a, at a 500-year event, it could happen, but it's going to be far less than it is now. And I'll point out, so this whole rain garden, you know, it gets a sand base and it's going to be, you know, covered in these drain tiles. That's going to help drain all of it, keep it all from holding water. Basically, any water that goes there, you should hardly see any of it almost any, almost any time.
Okay.
So it's going to soak in. It's going to soak in very quickly. And then I was going to jump to.
It's also going to be a berm where there's no berm now.
Right.
So it should be.
Yeah, so the so the other point there, so, you know, kind of that low point that hugs the, I think it's very close to hugging the property. They're they're not messing with what's how it's low at the road right now. That's where they're going to connect in there.
Yeah.
And they're going to stay, you know, they're staying a few feet away from the edge of the property line before they dip back down to the rain garden in there.
And they are touching the trees or no?
That I don't, I didn't study the landscaping plan or a lot of detail.
But those aren't new trees there, it looks like.
That's the new screen.
Yeah.
Which I was curious, is it like a pine tree? Do I get coverage all year round or, you know, and if it's a lilac bush, which is fine, but the leaves fall off, so then we'll all be exposed to the work. Well, now, is the uh buckthorn, the apple trees and other trees in there lose their leaves, so it's um.
All right, any other questions for?
I think someone, I mean, if any of the folks here tonight could follow up with her on what kind of trees those are, shouldn't be too tough, right? Sorry, I'm just like looking at all of you.
We're looking to.
So um there's four different types of just join. Just so that I can't hear from all of us.
You want to take this back?
Sure. She. Uh no, I'm just going to read the read this, if that's okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Four different types. So there will be um a mix of tamaracks, service berries, um. And a river birch and a swamp white oak.
What was the last one?
A swamp white oak.
White?
White oak, yep.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any, I'm still in the open meeting here, any other last comments? All right, I'm going to close that. All right, so it's back to council here. What do you guys think? Do you want to talk about anything or?
I don't know, a lot of my questions got answered, which was why I wanted to wait till later, but it sounds like we can be confident that the water leaving the site is less and particularly at twenty-sixty-eight Commerce. It sounds like that's going to be, we should be confident that that's resolved. And it sounds like the trees are going to be a lot nicer. So I would assume, I guess my, I'm hearing, I don't know, maybe a little concern about parking, but if the peak wasn't a problem, like we would assume that the lease with the, like I would assume that the lease with the church wouldn't work out, and then we would still have enough parking. And then off of Bel Air too. So while there is a reduction in spots, it doesn't sound like it's going to be a huge problem compared to the counts.
It's not like they're parking there every day, all day.
What?
It's not like anybody's parking there on the main street, you know, on the streets all day, every day.
And then the book drop scenario, I mean, like if I, me and my wife go by there too, it's like you just kind of get out of the car and get back in and leave.
Yeah. So it's no different, you just got to walk a little farther.
Yep, um and then my only other, not feedback, but a question was, since we're dealing with like a narrow drive aisle, but if the, you know, the various folks working on the project, it's two feet or three feet narrower than twenty-five to twenty-two feet, I think, for the drive aisle for driving through? If there's no, you know, super red flags and the people working on the designers say it's doable, is it something where, like, what would be a standard practice in the area um east of the parking but before Commerce? There's like that little, you know, where people would be mostly going two ways. Coming in and out of Commerce would probably be like the busiest spot, like would could be put up like a, you know, narrow lanes sign on the library property or something like that, or just something like caution, narrow lanes or something like that? Just so like people, like you said, be mindful and slow down. Sounds like it's not super uncommon, so I'm just wondering if there's an answer there, but um.
I don't want to connect back in, but all this is common, I'm wondering. Relative, I can connect in if we want, but relative to when you turn off of Commerce, there's actually a stretch that there is no parking on, and so by the time you you will have come in through that part of it, our concern more has to do with where there are people driving, backing out.
Okay.
So the actual driving back and forth at twenty-two isn't the concern, it's the people backing out, other people walking with their kids into the library, all of those elements coming together. So off of Commerce, you have a stretch of land, which I didn't measure, but where there isn't any movement like that, you're kind of getting settled, and it's at least a car length wa- um deep, so you'll get in before you'll hit your first.
Got it.
Thing where you have to pay attention. Now, on the Bel Air side, it's a little different, but I think we all know Commerce and Bel Air are two different speeds.
You can move a lot slower, yeah.
Right.
Okay, thanks. That's all I got.
Elsewhere, a few?
Well, I had similar concerns about coming off of Commerce, um just especially for people doing the cross turn, um not the right-hand turn from Commerce. In terms of safety, my other issue, which is off-site, but still deals with the county since Commerce is a county road, and that is, there's no easy pedestrian way to get across to the library. So I live on the other, I live um west east of of Commerce, and to cross Commerce, it's busy. The closest um crosswalk is at the shopping center. And um, you know, I don't know if there could be consideration. My understanding, the county is re-looking at that entry anyway into the shopping center, that they should be thinking about the library as well. And there's also a bus stop there. So we need to think about, we've got a lot of different traffic things. We've got a bus stop, hopefully we'll get back our express bus, that's the express bus stop. You've got pedestrians getting to the library. And how do how do we make that all work so people are safe?
So in on that, Jesse and I have been talking back and forth, and we uh actually just met with one of the commissioners recently, which I'll talk more at the end of the meeting, but um I think you might have mentioned this originally, where the crosswalk should be on the north side.
Right, uh-huh.
Right, so I think that could help.
Yeah.
Again, I'm not an engine, you know, road engineer, but it feels like the crosswalk should be on the north side and not the south side.
Yeah.
You know, right by the the.
Well, when it's on the south side, you get across the street, and unless you're going to walk down Commerce, there's no sidewalk to take you into the shopping center.
Right.
Because the sidewalk's on the north side in front of the dog um veterinary clinic.
And you got two lanes going into one and then back to, it's it's a it's a mess.
Yeah.
So we, that is something that I think we're is an ongoing thing we're working on, but um, you know, having a new commissioner or two. Maybe doesn't hurt. I've actually reached out on a separate, completely separate thing, which I'll talk to about later, but um and then I was like, right, you know, right on. So I was good, I was glad to hear this, but would that be good enough if we hopefully maybe improved that area? I mean, you still got to walk down a block.
Right.
I don't think it's feasible to just go straight across, you know, no matter what, but I think, you know, at the next major intersection to have a, I mean, there is a crosswalk there, you you do got to go, you know, and come back over.
The other place would be at Balsam, if it's possible.
Right, right.
Going farther down the block and having a crosswalk there.
Okay. Councilor, back in?
No one, good, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so I think you all heard what I just said, so um at the end of the day, I think at uh a little short-term pain for long-term gain. I think this is going to be a great thing when we're done, but um, you know, we're trying to help out temporarily if we can and um so I'm I'm ready. You guys, anybody wants to make a motion?
What is exactly our?
You can read it out there.
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to actually try to find it, but.
It's on eighteen fifty-five.
Eighteen fifty-five.
That was way off.
Can you read the screen?
Oh, okay. All right. I would like to make a resolution approving a conditional use permit for new replacement West Tonka Library Project at two zero seven nine Commerce Boulevard. Do I never mention the findings of fact or anything, or is that totally separate?
I mean, if you.
We really haven't changed anything, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I just want to change something that's there, everything should be covered.
Yep. All right, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second?
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you, guys, for coming out.
Thank you.
Betting this thing all. Yeah. All right, off to fun stuff. It's number seven, twenty-twenty-four Bond Issuance and Credit Enhancement Program Application. This is Maggie. All right, can you give us your name and?
Sure, yeah. Good evening, Mayor of the Council, my name is Jason Arfold. I'm with municipal advisor with Ellers and Associates. I've been working on this bond issue with my colleague Stacy Quilving, uh who I think you're probably familiar with. Uh as I understand, and I know it's been a little bit of time since you all have issued debt, and so uh we have put into your packet at what we call our pre-sale report. And that really outlines what the bond issue is proposed to look like, and I think it's probably helpful, I can just run through some of that, spend a little more time than I might otherwise, and certainly happy to answer any questions that you have at the end or go into any more detail.
Yep.
But what we have before you is a proposed four million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar bond issue, and I think one of the most important things is, well, what's it for? And uh it is primarily for, well, well, really two things. One is to reimburse you for past utility projects that you've undertaken on your water and sewer funds, and that's to replenish your uh fund balances there, make sure you have enough working capital to run those entities consistent with your rate studies and plans that you've put in place in the past. And then the other part of this is for new twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five uh projects in your sewer and water as well. So that's kind of the dual purpose of the bonds that are being issued. In Minnesota, you can't just issue bonds for any reason that you want to, you need some authority and statute, and so in this case, uh chapter four forty-four allows you to actually issue uh bonds for utility projects, general obligation bonds, without a referendum, and so that's what authority has been prescribed here, uh is that a utility chapter. And then uh when bonds are issued like this, there is a period of time, we call it a a call period, where uh the city can't prepay the bonds, and in this case, that's set up to be at about just under ten years from now. So when the bonds are issued, uh they'll need to be paid up through that ten-year period of time. Once that call period expires, then you or or is is up, then you have the option to either prepay, or in some cases, these bonds get refinanced at lower interest rates in the future. So just know that that's a part of this as well. As we kind of work through the the report that you have in front of you, the other thing that we're noting is that these bonds are what we call bank-qualified. Now, it's not that important to go into the weeds about what that means, but basically, if you stay under ten million dollars annually in total issuance, you can designate these as bank-qualified bonds. And all that means is that uh banks, you know, lending institutions have the opportunity to also uh bid on and purchase these bonds, and I'll talk a little bit more about that bidding process as well. And so that broadens the market for people that could potentially bid, and then theoretically has the opportunity to potentially lower your your borrowing costs as well by having a bigger pool of inv- potential investors. You talked at the outset about the state credit enhancement, so the state of Minnesota offers a credit enhancement program, well, they'll backstop these bonds, and so when that happens, you get the opportunity to use their higher bond rating, so these will be effectively sold as triple-A rated uh securities. You know, your underlying rating is a double A, so that's two notches higher. And what that means for you is, uh generally speaking, lower interest cost. So there's a small fee that you pay to the state, but the on the back end of this, I just kind of did, you know, kind of back of the napkin math, it's probably could equate to around forty thousand dollars in interest savings over the life of the bond issue, if that's just kind of put in perspective for you there on that.
What's the small fee?
Five hundred.
Five hundred dollars, that's it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the state tries to do this as a as a benefit for, you know, cities when they're issuing utility-related bonds like this, and so it's just enough to cover their cost of administration. So that's a good thing in this case, uh it lowers your cost of borrowing, which is great. We still will go to Standard and Poor's as we have in the past and get an underlying rating on these bonds, so we'll still go through that whole exercise to um submit information to them, um you know, have that meeting with them, with the staff, and talk about, you know, current status of the city, and they'll assign an underlying rating uh to the city's debt along with that as part of this process. Questions about that? No?
No.
Uh and then, you know, just talking about uh the basis for kind of this recommendation and then how the bonds will be sold, uh again, as I mentioned, this is the this is the uh most cost-efficient way that you have in statute to be able to issue bonds, it's general obligation, tax-exempt. But in terms of how these bonds will be sold, since you haven't been through this process recently, what what we're proposing here is to do what we call a competitive sale. And because these bonds are very commonplace, uh well-understood in the market, uh highly rated, we can do this sale on a competitive basis. And what that means is that we'll undertake a process to actually go out and solicit bids uh for these bonds in the marketplace, so it'll expose the entire uh securities market, and we'll, uh on the day of sale, I'll go through the schedule, actually um take those bids, tabulate them, and then recommend making the award to the lowest-cost bidder. So that's how that'll work, so that you're you're you know you're being exposed to a bunch of different uh potential purchasers of these bonds, uh and you'll, uh it generally tends to lead to s- some of the lowest rates. The alternative way that this can be done is through negotiation directly with an underwriter, and that's usually reserved for more complicated transactions that aren't well-understood in the market, just not the case here. So that's why we're recommending that's done on a competitive basis. And then uh just kind of going through some of the other pieces here, uh you know, we, as we always do, we're looking quarterly at your existing debt, just to make sure that there aren't any opportunities to refund, as I mentioned, bonds that might be callable now, uh to get better interest savings and things of that nature. We've we do that quarterly, we've done it again, there are no current opportunities, the rates now are higher than many of the bonds that you already hold, and so those opportunities don't currently exist, but again, we'll continue to keep monitoring that. And then there's also, once your bonds are sold, there's some ongoing um uh administration that occurs there. There's uh you're agreeing to provide um disclosure of your financial con- uh condition to the market on an annual basis, we call that continuing disclosure. It's just so that people that are going to purchase your bonds can understand how the city's doing financially during the entire time that the bonds are outstanding. So you contract with us to help you with that, we'll continue to help you with that uh on an annual basis for these as well. Likewise, something called arbitrage, so the IRS doesn't want you issuing tax-exempt debt and then investing it at a rate higher than uh what you're paying in interest, right? So we have to continually monitor that. Again, we're helping you do that and working with that on your behalf. And then, again, what this talks about is, you know, you have a history of working with a a couple different entities that go along with this too. There's a, you know, legal counsel, that's Necessary Bond Counsel here, so uh that's been tasked, it's Statineus and Hollister in the past, so that continues to be the case. And then uh there is an interaction that has to happen when you pay your bonds, and so um almost every municipality uses paying agent services, and so we help you with that as well. Just make sure that we get your money to the right place where it needs to be so that bondholders are paid on time, because it's very important to make sure that that happens and that you're not late, because that can be problematic with respect to your bond ratings. And then again, I talked about this, this will be rated, uh so we'll work with Standard and Poor's, who have historically rated the city, uh to get that underlying rating, although we, as I said, will be using that triple-A rating is what this will be sold as a triple-A rated uh piece of debt. And then just so then just briefly the schedule, so how this works is, you know, we're having this this discussion tonight, kind of our pre-sale discussion, um and then uh, you know, we would proceed then to schedule that call with the rating agency, and uh we do what we call a due diligence call to review the official statement. So we help you prepare your offering document, that's your offering document to the market, lists all the details about the city and the transaction and all those sorts of things, so we just make sure that that's being represented accurately, that it's a hundred percent correct before we actually put it out to the marketplace, so we go through that exercise and distribute that on this current schedule around August twenty-ninth is the plan. And then uh the uh council meeting to award the sale of the bond, so that same day uh in the morning, we'll take all the bids in, that's actually going to be September tenth, that's a that's a change, it's a September tenth meeting. We'll take bids in our office that morning, tabulate all those bids, and then whichever one of those ends up being the the lowest-cost option, present that that evening for your consideration at the council meeting, and assuming you approve that, then uh we would proceed to a closing that would happen on October first, and that's when you would have funds available to you from that bond transaction, and you could start, um you know, using those to both reimburse and pay for new project costs. So I I'm going to stop, but I'm certainly happy to go into any more detail about any of this or answer questions that you have about the whole bond transaction.
Does council have any questions?
The council meeting is September tenth, not the eleventh.
Correct, yeah, okay.
I mean, I feel like I need a dumb-dumb one-on-one explanation, because bonds, city bonds are not anywhere near my area of expertise. I mean, is this something we? I mean, is this something we need to do?
Yes.
It's a cash flow issue.
Okay, we have a cash flow issue. I mean, we haven't seen the current budget, so I feel like this is the cart before the horse a little bit, because we haven't seen.
Well, can you explain, explain why we're doing this?
I can explain it a little bit, too, and I might need Noah as well, but, so as part of the long-term plan, so this is, so the budgets, we're starting to do the preparation for the budget, the, so the budget's kind of, again, for operations next year and kind of what our capital needs are. The cash flow issue here is, is part of the long-term financial plan, we're projecting our future capital needs, along with the rate study, which shows that we're in the negative right now.
Okay.
And so with our cash flow, essentially our general fund helping to cash flow our utilities, because it's, we're in the negative, we need to, we're, we're gonna be, like, part of the financial plan was to reimburse for some of the costs we, in our utilities that we already paid for, to get more cash back into it, because we're sitting so negative right now, and so we just need that boost again to have more of that cash flow.
Okay. I mean, I know we've had cash flow issues for a long time.
Yeah.
So, help me understand, if we didn't do this?
It's, so, right now, and I hope I explain this, Noah will come up if I'm saying this wrong, but, so right now, the city receives its tax revenue twice a year, which is in, I believe, July and November, December?
Okay.
And so it's kind of like we get those, those cash boosts, where then you get it, and then you have, you're kind of spending it down, because you don't have a lot of more revenue, like, we have some revenue coming in from other sources, but not really. And so you're kind of spending down, and then you get that boost again, and then you're spending down. And so right now, because we're not, we're float, kind of floating our utili, our utility funds, our revenue from those are not keeping up, we're ta, we're, we're spending it down quicker, the arts, because our general fund is kind of helping cash flow our utilities. And so cash flow is kind of spending down quicker than we, than we, than if we had the adequate revenue coming in.
So part of the rate study that we did, and we're gonna be putting that into place, is that gonna help, that's long-term, gonna help us?
That's, yeah, the long-term.
So we can get out of the cash?
Yes.
Problem?
So when we start adjusting our rates, that'll start covering our expenses more, the revenue, and so that'll close the gap, and we're gonna rely on our general fund less to cash flow our utilities. And so it's part of the long-term financial plan was to, to kind of do, to schedule some of these bondings for the next four years, so that we can at least cash flow that until we can get everything back to where it needs to be.
So you reached out to, for the bonds, they didn't come to us?
We reached out, because we, as part of our long-term plan, Noah and I have been concerned about cash flow, and so we just, it's kind of a way to get us back on, part of the long-term plan to get us back on track until both utilities and general fund can cash flow themselves. And so it's part of fixing the, the issue that we were, were having with the imbalance of the funds. Am I seeing that correctly?
So this is the same transaction that was done in 2020, same structure? So, yeah, oh, excuse me, so this was the same transaction we did in 2020. So we're refunding utility debt, so as these projects have gotten to be millions of dollar projects, we weren't getting the cash upfront, we're getting on the back end. So we did reach out to Ellers, so.
Okay. And then, this is kind of another dumb-dumb question for you, so forgive me, but I think I heard you say that for 10 years, we cannot pay this off early if we come into some huge influx of money. Is that standard operating procedure?
Yeah, so Mayor, Members of the Council, yes, it's, it is standard. There, all of these bond transactions have a, a period where you can't call the bonds, and it, it fluctuates, but it is market-dependent. You can, you can, you know, require that you have a call date that's sooner, but you generally pay for that in the rate and more interest expense. And so, so there is that, that lockout period, but you'll have other bonds that will be coming, do that, you would have the opportunity to prepay if you did come into that windfall as you suggest.
That's what I, that's why I'm looking forward to seeing the budget, to see what bonds are coming up and where we're getting close to getting some of them paid off. I mean, I, I'm slowly understanding the new process.
Council calls for 2025 issue as well.
Okay.
So there's $7.8 million is gonna be issued in two years. So we'll be coming back again next year. So we can, Matt, we can maybe explain it a little bit better? I think maybe that's due.
I think bigger picture, too, and this is kind of helping me explain it to myself, maybe to answer Councilmember McEnany's question, too, and anyone, including myself, like, listening, it's like really high level, we're just, this is part of our long-term financial plan. Like, I don't know how many meetings ago it was when we looked at, you know, kind of projecting the budget levy and where we may be in a few years, and to keep this on course for that, this is kind of an integral part to it. I would understand it as, like, the most effective, efficient way to get where we, so we keep doing what we say we were gonna do with the long-term financial plan, right?
Yeah, it's to, to carry out, carry that plan forward, but to also make sure we're covering our bills in both, both areas.
We're reimbursing ourselves for projects we've done in the past, plus we have projects coming up in the future, and we need cash flow. We have to have cash flow to do this. This is something that we don't really have a choice, we're gonna have to do.
I understand all that, I'm just trying to understand fundamentally, I, I, city finances are, you know, nowhere near my area of expertise, I'm just trying to understand it.
Yeah.
So keep in mind, we do three to five million dollars of CFP a year, and cash flowing that with the levy, and cash on our books for almost a half a decade. So like in 2020, we hadn't issued new debt for five years, we reimbursed ourselves at that point, we're doing the same thing in now.
Okay.
It is confusing, you know, we're not taking out debt for a future project, we're taking out for a prior project, it makes it a little bit more complicated, and that's where we're keeping under five million, but it is, we've done it in the past, the same structure, so.
Is there any kind of a 101 bond, city budget-type book? I mean, it would be, I, I'd really rather understand what, what's going on here than just sit here and ask all these ridiculous questions.
Yeah, we can.
You don't know about.
We can try and, I can try and put something together that kind of explains, kind of.
The League might have.
Yeah. They might have something, yeah.
Or type up, that you can push play and learn it.
Yeah.
I would say Ellers might, too, and that's why we've been utilizing them, is to help us through this, because I don't, I know, none of us know it.
Yeah, they might have.
Perfectly, I mean, that's why we're needing their help.
When I did.
I think you did a graphic when you first started that was really understandable.
Yeah, yeah, with the budget and kind of where, yeah, I can, I can reach out, yeah, look at the league, look at what Ellers has, and I can try and put together kind of more of a 101 kind of informational sheet to, yeah, to help out. It, it does, it, we're, I think we're in a unique situation, again, with, the nice thing is, is when we go into this rating call, we do have that long-term plan in place, we do have the utility rate study in place, they're gonna wanna look at those things because of where we're sitting right now with the, the deficit in our utility funds, they're gonna wanna know how we're gonna get out of that and how we got there. And so by having a plan in place, they, that will be a strength when we go into that call. But, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's a cash flow issue that we just need to manage at the moment, and part of the plan to get us healthy in all of our funds again in the next.
And so taking out this bond, we're gonna go from a double-star rating to a triple-star rating, did I hear that?
So we, so we're gonna.
Triple A.
We're gonna use the state's rating.
Okay.
Take it back out of the state.
Yep, so the.
So ours is double A, and 2020 is last time we did this. So that's the lowest interest we could presumably get.
Right. The city's underlying rating will not probably change, but when you sell the bonds, they'll be sold in the market as if they're AAA-rated, which is helpful for you as well, less interest expense.
Got it, thank you.
So this evening, part of the process will be to approve us to submit that application to the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority, and that's where that 500 fee comes in, and then we will go through that process, and that's how we will, they will work with them to, to get that AAA rating. So, yeah, I'll, I'll do my recommendation, and then if you have any more questions. So again, the timeline tonight would be to approve the resolution that would provide us to, to go out and sell the general obligation utility revenue bond, so that would be, as Jason said, putting that out for bid, and then we will review those at the September 10th meeting. You'll review all the organizations that bid on that, and then also to approve us moving forward with applying, with the application for that credit enhancement agreement with Minnesota Public Facilities Authorities, that we get that rolling as well, and that's for the AAA. Yeah, so that's our recommendation. If you have any questions, though, let me know, and, yep, we're all here, I'll hear the answer.
Any other questions for Maggie or Jason?
Maggie, I have one.
Okay.
The whereas, at least once in the resolution still has that September 11th date, I don't know if that matters at all.
It does, that will be changed, so within that resolution, we do have September 11th, that is actually gonna be changed. We're recommending it to be amended to September 12th.
Okay, so whoever makes a motion, clarify the date.
Where would the, I'm on 1891, where would the date need to be clarified? Is it?
It's under number two.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I didn't read the whole.
Got it, got it.
Yep.
All right. Anybody wanna make a motion, or?
Well, I, I just had two things, I guess, I wanted to add before, I mean, I, I would be ready to make a motion, but if Mr. Landsman found anything on here that he wanted to comment on, or no? Okay. That's fine. Cool. And then I think it's important to, let me just reiterate that this is us keeping on task with our long-term financial plan and doing what we said we were gonna do to hit some of the marks that we talked about in previous meetings, and we're making sure that that stays on course. This is probably the best way to get there, so. I don't have anything else I wanted to add. Unless anybody else does.
The bonds are gonna be, what, three and a quarter-ish? That's what it looks like?
Right, yeah, Mayor, Members of the Council, we have in here, we have 0.5% of a cushion in here, just because we don't know what the market's gonna do between now and the time of sale, but we're estimating about 3.54%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, AAA, three and a half, we're doing okay on our side, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can do that if we're all set.
Yep.
I would like to make a resolution providing for the sale of 4.82 million general obligation utility revenue bonds, and authorizing the city to enter into a credit enhancement program agreement with Minnesota Public Facilities Authority.
Did you change the date?
Oh, and number two, changing the, changing the date to September 10th, 2024, not September 11th, on item number two.
Okay, all right, all right, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes, thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
And then.
Number eight, we got T-Mobile Telecommunications Solutions Project.
If you wouldn't mind doing a motion for the credit enhancement.
Oh, is that a second part?
Just entering into the, allowing staff to move forward and with that, applying for that agreement.
Okay. Does someone wanna do that? To the credit enhancement part.
And that's with the state of Minnesota.
Are you talking about 1894, page 1894?
I do not have the number.
I think it, I think it's that one.
It can just be a motion to direct staff, or, what do you, what do you, what do you want staff, or what do you?
Yeah, I, I mean, maybe we don't need a motion.
Well, we should.
It was, it was to direct staff to move forward with submitting the application to move, with the state for the credit enhancement agreement.
You go back up to, yeah, up to the top there?
1894.
Right.
Yeah, right here.
So make, someone make a motion for that.
I would like to make a motion to direct staff to move forward with the credit enhancement program agreement.
Okay, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you. All right, now to number eight, T-Mobile Telecommunications Solutions Projects.
All right, Mayor and Council, I'm gonna try and get through this as quickly as possible. In your packet is a memo that I put together explaining this project. So at the moment, the city amound contracts with several providers for telecommunications services, so we have Frontier, they do our VoIP line internet, and POTS lines, those are the old analog lines, we'll go into that a little bit later. Verizon is our service provider for cellphones, tablets, lines, and mobile internet, so out in the field. MediaCom provides fire department internet, and then Mitel is a company that provo, provides our current desk phones. So those are hard, hardware phones that sit on our desks. So the city has services provided to five buildings and structures throughout the city, and also additional infrastructure, that includes lift stations and wells, and then I listed the five locations. So again, I won't go into great detail, but for each company, but I provided that in the packet in more detail, again, with cellphones, VoIP, our VoIP phones, and POTS lines. So a little bit about why we started looking into this, our Mitel desk phones are going to become obsolete, they're gonna no longer service them next year. And so we were, so we, we had to start looking for a solution there as to, you know, how we were gonna replace those desk phones. Also, our POTS lines, there's some regulations that have changed as far as phasing out those lines, and so we're finding that if we don't upgrade, we are, we could be subject to higher costs, less, our, our, if they ever go down, the service, the regulations for service are, could be delayed, and so there's some risk there. And so that was one of the things we needed to start looking at, too, is how we were gonna address our, those lines that we currently have. And we do have several lines that include fire alarms, service alarms, fax lines, and elevator alarms, and we gotta make sure that those are not interrupted, or most of those. So over the last several months, staff has been researching effective and efficient ways to navigate decommissioning those POTS lines, and then the discontinuation of those desk phones, and then other minor telecommunications issues. And so the solution that we're, we've kind of come up with is bringing it all under T-Mobile. They're able to, with, in their organization, they team up with other companies, and they're able to address all of, address our needs in different ways. So that include, that would include internet, it, one option would be, I do have Daniel from T-Mobile here, if you have more technical questions, but we would install, be able to keep the infrastructure that we currently have for, like, connect, or internet, but they would have to install some, an adapter, a 5D adapter on City Hall. That would allow us, again, to keep the infrastructure that we have. We would have to install some new routers within the liquor store, fire station, and public works, but that's, that would kind of improve, right now we have, what is it? LAN or, oh gosh, sorry, we don't, we don't have Wi-Fi in City Hall, so that would add Wi-Fi, but also maintain our current internet, so we would have both of those solutions, and it would improve, again, if somebody comes in, that they could actually use Wi-Fi in City Hall, which we don't currently offer. POTS lines, so we would, T-Mobile would partner with a company called Uma to convert our POTS lines from analog to digital with, again, detailed information in the packet of how that works, but it would be through a device called Uma Air Dial. Desk phones and phones, T-Mobile offers a desk and computer phone solution called Dialpad. So this is a cloud-based platform, and so we would have, we would replace some of the existing desk phones, we did an audit. We did an audit, some of them we will eliminate because we don't need them anymore, just with staffing changes, since we got those Mitel phones, there's, we're just trying to get rid of as much hardware as possible. And then we'd also look into reducing other hardware, like cellphones. All the Public Works employees all have a flip phone right now, and they all have their own phone number, but one option would be for them to, the DialPad option includes an app that connects to the desk phone, to the computer, or a smartphone. And so one option would be for them to use their smartphone, download the DialPad app, and then it would all, it would keep all city information within that app, and it would tell you if you're getting a call from the city. That's an option, and then we would eliminate the hardware cost, and then we could do like a small stipend monthly. It would also, just in talking to some employees, it would eliminate them having to carry around two phones. And so that's a benefit, I guess, that we were looking at for both, both sides. So I did review the financial costs, and there are some hardware, initial hardware costs that I did go over. I guess I'm not gonna go into, like, in depth, I'm gonna do the summary page, just because it gets kind of, I think, be a little overwhelming to go through this all. But, so the combined new costs, again, we do, we would have a, about a $10,500 one-time cost to get internet set up, the desk phone set up, and then the, the POTS lines changed over. This does not include, at some point, we do need to do all of our lift stations, it's this, because those are POTS lines. That doesn't include that yet, we're looking at that internally as to when we can do it, because it's about $1,000 per lift station. So we just gotta, but we have to do it again, because these lines are becoming obsolete. And so we're hoping, as part of the budget process, to get that incorporated as a capital project. But, okay, so again, combined new costs, hard, the one-time costs, and then when we looked at the monthly costs, we, the new monthly costs, we project to be about $1,653 for about a little under $20,000 a year. So that's, that's what we're project, we're, again, replacing all these items, we think are, it'll come in around 20 a year. If you look at the current costs for, for all of these services, we're at about 41 right now. And so we do think that it'll be about a little over $21,000 savings, just in getting everything switched over to T-Mobile, having it all under one roof, having more efficiency. Again, some of the stuff has become obsolete, and so it's just like creating more efficiency, just changing stuff over, again, those, a lot of those, a lot of it needs to happen anyways, but that's what we're projecting our savings to be. We, again, have those hard costs that we have to, to pay, which is the $10,500. But again, long-term, we think that it's a real, it'll be a cost savings, and it'll be a benefit, again, get everything updated where it needs to be. Future projects, I do mention the lift station again, we're gonna talk about that.
Can you read that? Do we have 27 lift stations?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Yep, yep. So we think it'll be about 30,000. Um, the, the, T-Mobile, our T-Mobile rep, Daniel, has been working with the city attorney on the agreement documentation. It is still in progress. I did talk with our rep today, and he says his team should be getting more information over to Attorney Landsman by the end of the week. And so per our recommendation, we are waiting, we, it would be contingent on the city attorney signing off on that agreement. But we are, we do think as staff that this will create a lot of efficiency, and we do think it'll get us where we need to be. And so we are recommending approval from the city council to start the transition process with T-Mobile, and again, based on final sign-off from the city attorney. That's a lot of information, I apologize. It's, but we're confident that it'll be a good solution, and it'll save us money, and yeah, get us where we need to be.
All right.
And Daniel is here if we have any technical questions.
Does Council have any questions?
I, I just have a couple comments. Good job for doing this research.
Yeah.
It's a no-brainer.
Cost savings, for sure.
For the savings. But I'm just wondering, did you do your, how'd you end up with T-Mobile? Did you do your due diligence, looking at other companies, and found that T-Mobile would give you everything you need for the right cost?
Yeah, so I didn't, so this has been like a pretty lengthy process. So I have been, you know, working, trying to work with Verizon on a few things. Mitel has reached out to us as well, and then Frontier as well. So I have been work, I was working individually with these companies, and I won't go into too much detail, but I just feel like we did, I did end up having a meeting with Daniel, we connected at, I don't know how we connected, if it was at a conference or, or what, but I, the idea kind of popped into my head that we, you know, it, when, you don't have local representatives for companies, it can be really challenging to get the service that you need and want, as far as, like, quick response if something goes down. And, and I, I don't wanna, I have to be careful what I say, but it's just refreshing to have a local representative that can offer solutions to all of our needs as far, because we have been already having issues with some of our, just some of our telecommunications and just getting stuff fixed with some companies has been very challenging. And so I guess I would have to be honest, I haven't reached out to another company to see if they could provide all these solutions.
That's all I needed to hear. I, I, I'm not questioning your judgment. I'm sure you, you researched this great, I, it was just a question.
Yeah, yeah, but I think, again, they were, they came in and they were, I was like, well, actually, we need this done, and we need this done. And they said, yes, we have a solution to all those, and I, you know, it just, in the end, it all came together, and we feel like it will work really well, so.
Perfect.
Do you want to give us your name and just say quick anything?
Yeah. Nice evening, this evening. Daniel O'Donnell, T-Mobile.
Yep.
Great to meet you guys.
Yeah.
Megan did a great job, you know, being diligent and auditing their existing services and asking all the right questions, so we're excited for the opportunity to partner.
Can I ask you?
But if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to explain any of the services or the technology improvements.
I might ask him something, he's waited two hours. I, I have a question. What other cities, if you can disclose, or can you say at least how many, or maybe names of other cities that have done this?
I can't name other cities, but, you know, we work.
We do a lot of these in those cities.
Very much in-depth throughout Hennepin County, with the county, and across the state of Minnesota and North Dakota.
Okay.
But that's at least my turn.
That was gonna be one of my questions, too. So that, that's great. You service cities, so you know the needs and.
Yep, cities, counties, police, fire.
Fantastic.
Libraries. So they're all engaged in different combinations of services that we.
And so Maggie, when you said you're excited about having a local representative, are you in and around the twin cities?
I'm from the twin cities.
Okay, perfect.
Well, this is kind of the twin cities, but I'm from the south side.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's just nice having somebody in Minnesota, because some of our accounts, we find that were, somebody's in New York or somebody, and so Daniel's been great about being able to come out here and actually assess things here, and, and that's nice because, again, when you, when your people or representatives are in New York, the response time's not, one, when we need things done quickly, it can be challenging, so.
One, one last thing, is there like a contract, set amount of time that we have to be with you?
Each service has its own independent option, so just as an example, Uma Air Dial has a few different plan options. The best plan option is the three-year.
Yeah.
And that's the one that, that we recommended, just from a, I mean, these are not, elevators aren't going away.
Right.
From a service agreement standpoint, DialPad does not have an agreement, so it's customizable, customizable based on the needs of the environment, and that's cloud-based, so it could, you know, support, you know, a desk phone, computer application, phone application, just based on that need, or one or all of those services. So, and that can be customized, you know, based on what the ecosystem needs require. And then with phones, there's a two-year agreement with, when you get a subsidized device.
Okay.
But there's no agreement if, if you're providing your own equipment, and the City Hall Cradle Point adapter would be a great example, there's, you know, no cost to that, or no contract because the device is purchased.
All right. Okay.
And then, once you transition everything over, do you do a total training with everybody who will be needing to access all this new equipment?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. The training and implementation are included as part of the DialPad deployment, and then Steve Holm, my solutions engineer, and myself here are local to help support that, but there's also virtual training that.
Great.
You know, is oftentimes a little more convenient, you get more people depending on the schedule. And then Uma, that's all done remotely for training, but there's onsite installation, so everything can, it's self, and Uma, the Uma POTS replacement, that is self-install capable, but they have the ability to come out and do that installation, and then their training is virtual, but it's a very, very simple portal setup and management, so it's an all-in-one system.
Well, this is also exciting, updated servers, you know, from the archaic ages and now updating here. This is great.
Yeah, and there'll be a significant opportunity within the lift stations, not only from a monthly cost savings, but from a ability to manage those services in a real-time basis.
Nice.
When we get to that.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate you coming up.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions, or you want to?
No, I mean, it's like, long-term cost savings, small upfront costs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, we got a resolution.
Oh.
Maybe? 1897?
Don't have a resolution.
Just direction, or?
Motion to give staff direction.
I think the resolution, or, because we still need to come back with the contract, is that the plan?
So I did recommend.
I, I did send over the agreement.
Yeah.
It just came through at like 6:40.
Yeah, I'm going through it, but I mean, you may not get a response until Monday, I'm out of the office Thursday.
Whenever the contract's done, we're ready.
So do we just need to give, just do a motion to the staff?
So Scott would, so my recommendation was approval by the city council to start the process when you are good with the con.
I mean, it could be, because it could be a motion to approve subject to an agreement that is satisfactory to the city attorney and city manager.
Yep. No, it sounds good.
Say that again.
So, so moved.
Yeah. That's what we always did on.
Yeah, she's the one who's doing the minute, so.
That's what I was like before, did I have to say the findings are fact? I was going way back.
You're gonna have to re-watch the video.
So, motion to approve the proposal from T-Mobile, subject to an agreement between T-Mobile and the city that is satisfactory to the city attorney and the city manager. I always like to have at least two people involved.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes. Thanks again for coming up.
Thank you.
I, I do have one question, is it possible to get a words version of what you sent over? I'm, I'm sure it is.
Okay.
I, I didn't even get a chance to read it, it was almost too small on my phone, so like, I tried to glance at it, but yeah, I can ask for one, absolutely.
Yeah, if not, I'll just, you know, mark up and put my questions in there.
Sure, yeah. If, I, I won't get it probably till tomorrow, but if.
Well, that's fine. I mean, I'll look at it now and then when I'm on the plane, so I'll get back, I mean, then I'll go through it and we'll, we can talk Monday.
Okay.
At the latest. All right, thanks. All right, number nine, decorative crosswalks.
Nikki Bayer, members of the council, Matt Baumann, city engineer. So a few meetings ago, you asked us to kind of come back with some options for crosswalks, more artistic options that could be placed in the city, so we did a little asking around, put together kind of a simple table, fairly high level, but just kind of go over the differences and options. And there's really two types of, of options, there's surface applied, so that just goes on existing pavement, and then there's pavement treatments, so we put a different type of pavement in there, the options there. And then there's a few things to consider, so it's, it's not just the one-time application, it's gonna be the maintenance of it, of it, and then the potential reapplication of these things going forward. And then the, who can do it? So if we do something special, most of what is done now, the city staff takes care of, so they typically put on, what you see on the left there, they'll put it, they just do painted-on crosswalk blocks. And so most of it, a lot of times, those are ground, the pavement's ground down a little bit, so when the paint goes on and snowplows go past, they take it off. So there's a couple, so the couple surface-applied options to the right there, so there's, those are just two names, considers traffic patterns, XD and DuraTherm. They are pre-made patterns that are basically kind of stamped into the existing pavement, and so you can get many different options for those patterns. And so the, one of the, the, the issues with those is you, to get them to, because it is a pattern, you don't necessarily want to do it in several steps, which, so it gets to be a little bit of a problem when, if you don't close the whole lane down to traffic, to put them down. So that's one of the negatives there, and then again, as, eventually those will peel off, and then trying to replace them, that can be a little bit of an issue. Then we can go to the next one there, is artistic paint, you can stay up on that same table yet. So that is really just like it sounds, so pick an artist, pick a design, and they kind of put it, put whatever paint design on there that's approved, that's agreed to. That, that needs a reflective stripe on each side, just to make it stand out a little bit more, and then you put a clear epoxy over that. The, the time that that'll last, that's gonna vary a little bit, and the cost is dependent on whatever the artist would, would charge you for that. So you get lots of options there. So then you go, get to the pavement options, and so these are generally gonna have a much longer life to them. The, the trick is, to install them, they're, you know, they are generally gonna be inlaid within the existing asphalt, so there's concrete, pavers. I put pavers in it just because it is an option, I think we've had enough discussions on that, that we don't want to move forward with that if we don't have to.
Right.
But the concrete, yeah, you put, you put that in, that's generally gonna disrupt traffic for, you know, seven days, seven-plus days, so that's how long we need to keep traffic off of it. So that would, again, you need to shift traffic around, or you need to close the street to put it in, but you could put in colors, you could put in stamping, you can do things like that. And then the, then the pavers, again, is just another, another option there. Generally, we'd want to have a concrete strip on either side of that as well, just to kind of hold them in place. They call that a header. And then those will last as long as the pavers would last.
All right.
So to summarize that, then, the, there's many options here, generally, they're gonna cost three to 10 times as much as what the normal painting that we do in town is, and then they're, they're gonna disrupt traffic for a little bit to, to get them in. But I think when this came up, and just in my head, I think a lot of the areas where these would probably go are on the county roads, so that adds another layer of complexity to get them installed, that they would generally let us do them with approval, and then, but then we're responsible to maintain them going forward. Most of the crosswalks that cross the county road, they paint, maintain, the ones that are going, parallel, the city paints and maintains, so, yeah, we just have to work that out if this is something we wanted to pursue. So, yeah, with that, it's kind of a discussion, anything you guys want to ask?
Also have any questions?
Thank you for doing the research.
Yeah, where did this, like, all this, this conversation all start?
I don't recall this conversation at all.
I don't remember talking about it.
I do. Because, because I've seen them actually in action, and they, the, the, these decorative crosswalks also serve for traffic calming, so drivers see them, you know, and they slow down because they're trying to figure out what it is. And. they're trying to figure out what it is. Um, and, um, you know.
I've seen them. I mean, I know what they are. I just didn't recall having any conversation about it either.
At, um.
Yeah, I don't.
Just a month or two ago.
Which, which meeting it was, but it did come up.
Well, personally, I think it's unnecessary, a huge expense and overkill. I say stick with the white lines.
Abbey Road. We'll stick with classic Abbey Road.
Classic Abbey Road.
Um, I guess for me, I mean, like they're, they're cool, but like we should crawl before we walk as we get that whole area put back together.
Exactly.
And just get it done right. Like we're getting rid of papers. We're not re, like, want to say the paper, the word paper. Like, I don't know. I don't know how the different ones work, but I don't know. I guess I'm a fan of the classic ones.
Yeah. I, I guess I'd say the same thing for now.
I disagree. And given that what we're going to do with our sidewalks in terms of colors and stuff, a new style of, uh, crosswalk would fit with it. But I'm one vote.
Yeah. Wow. All right. Well, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I think we're at number 10. Councilor Pugh, do you have any reports?
No.
Okay. Uh, council member, Maggie?
You know, I just have a few things. Um, we've talked about this before and we've had Grandview apartment people come to discuss with us, but there are just continually so many complaints about Grandview, the management and the condition of the apartments. I'm just curious, do we have any recourse or can we intervene in any way? I'm sure you see on Nextdoor every other day. I don't even.
I don't go on there.
I don't, I don't, I do only because I feel like I need to see what everybody's complaining about.
Yeah.
I don't ever talk on it, but you know, it just seems like this has been going on, been an ongoing problem for a long time. So I'm just asking, we've had somebody, I think here last December, who got up and spoke about it.
She was moving.
And, and I believe there's maybe new management, but as a city, is there anything we can do? I, I want to be able to answer people when they bring this up, or is this literally something that the management of facilities is the only person responsible for keeping their property maintained and livable?
We did send a letter to, I think that came from Andy. This is before you, but, um, but yeah, he, I think it's in his file. I don't know where he's at with it, if he's closed it out or we gotta reopen it.
I'm just bringing up, cause there've been a lot of recent complaints. So it's, it's on the top of my head.
Can you have you and him meet about that and see if he needs to reach back out to management? Again, this might be a different management company than the one before, but.
I feel like they got a new one. Um.
Minnesota has really strong laws in favor of tenants. And so if they organized, if they went to probably like legal aid.
Well, remember their organizer moved to a different location. That's what they were struggling with.
So.
So you're hearing from multiple people, but no organizing.
Well, they used to have a, a gal that lived there from our previous speaker.
I remember that.
Right.
And she ended up moving. So I'm not sure if they have somebody who's advocating for them over there. I'm just reading all the complaints that never seem to go away. Nothing seems to be getting better. It was just a question. So when I answer.
Do you know about it or do you want to get back to us on it?
I've heard some things, but I mean, so we don't do rental licenses. So we're not inspecting properties or anything. I think that there's some recourse on the building official side, cause you know, apartments and rentals still need to meet certain standards. So.
Was it a county thing?
It could be county or state. I mean, I, from a actual building, I mean, where, I don't know what Andy cited. I'd have to see, but I'm guessing it's probably outside, uh, maintenance of the building or the property. But anything inside is, I don't know that that's any of our authority.
They can withhold their rents and put, put the rent in escrow.
Who can?
A tenant can. If you feel that your landlord's not meeting health and safety issues in your property, you know, where you're renting, you can escrow your rent, put, you put in a separate account and withhold it.
I was just simply wondering if we as a city can.
As a city, we don't do that.
There was discussion a while back about whether or not to do rental licensing, if I remember correct. And, and it was never pursued by the city. Rental license, every year or two years or three years, when you come in for a new rental license, you have, um, there's an inspection done. You have to bring your property up to code.
Right. We did talk about that.
Yeah. Um, but besides that, I'm assuming, you know, what, what you correctly probably said, that Andy was doing, was looking at, um, nuisances or code violations on the outside. And the inside, the, unless, unless it really rises to a level of like a hazardous building, which then they wouldn't be able to have occupancy, um, which I don't think that from what I'm understanding, that may not be the issue. They're really, I mean, we really don't, we don't get involved with the ins, inside of a building and building code, with the, with the building code unless they're coming in for some, something that would be permit involved.
So again, this is the city, but could they reach out to the county and the state? These are departments there that can help these people? Or could, maybe we tell Jesse to look into that?
I would offer that.
I'm just wondering if for last resort, what kind of authority do we have, if any, to try to help?
I would say probably very little, but I would offer that we might be able to better help somebody get connected to a resource. I mean, that would be, I think, probably our best role. Um, unless, like you said, I mean, if it's an actual hazardous building, um, then that would be something we may need to enforce. But, um, it's, it's a tough situation, but there are resources and I mean, I know it's tough to find them. So if, if you get people coming to you, send them our way. And I mean, maybe we can find somebody for them, whether that's a county or state.
And Councilor Pugh is correct with regards to the statutes about tenant remedies that are there, um, regardless of what their lease may say that there are tenant remedies and they can do. And I, I don't know if this is still around, cause I'm going back to when I was in law school and I did this. And I had a full head of hair back then. But there used to be, and it probably still around, something called Home Line, H O M E.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
And it's a place where tenants can call up and I don't think they, they look at, it's usually manned by law students or women or however we say it now, but staff, there we go, by, by, uh, law students. Um, and I don't believe by, at least back in the day, that it wasn't based on income. It was just you had questions about rental, it was a place you can go to and they may be, that they may be able to connect them to the sources. Um, I may look up real quick to see if I can find it.
Well, thank you for anybody listening. They can, they're hearing you. So.
Yeah. It here's, I just looked it up. It's Home Line. Hold on one second. It's HomeLineMN.org. So H O M E L I N E M N dot org. And it says right in their tagline, free legal help for renters. So they, that would be a good resource to go to. Um, doesn't involve the city, but they could, but, but it's there and then they can connect you to whatever resources are needed.
Great. Thank you. I just have a couple more quick things. I wasn't here the last meeting, so some of this is, um, share, you're at the farmer's market a lot and I'm there pretty much every weekend and I love chatting with the vendors. It has been a pretty tough summer for them down at the farmer's market from the road construction and all the Artesa, you know, construction. And they, they just want, um, us to make sure everybody knows that parking is not a problem. They can still pull in down that, the street, even though it, it is a dead end. They can still pull into the, the ramp and the farmer's market parking. Um, and they just really, really appreciate our community support. So just wanted to pass that along. Um, I want, I, everybody probably knows this, but for those that don't, Paula's not here tonight because her son, John, had a, suffered a cardiac arrest on Friday and he's still in critical condition. Um, he was a mountain firefighter for 20 years and most people in the community know him from his lawn care business. So I just wanted to let, um, everybody know that doesn't and that we're keeping Paula and John in our thoughts for, you know, a full recovery. And then last but not least, Jesse, you're probably sick of me asking, but any word on Duane sixty-six building? I heard rumor that she's putting it up for sale again. Have you heard that?
Well, do you want to respond first or?
I will say I've been reaching out, um, as recently as this week.
Remember he came to talk to us.
Well, we just look for polite, we politely look for updates. Um, you know, of course we can't force anybody to do anything with their properties as far as development or anything. So we're, I will continue on that. Um, I had heard some questions about it at, um, Spirit and I thought there was a movement. We were aware of it, or we thought we were aware of a movement for that. So I, I wish I had a better answer for.
I, I wish so too, because it's, it's like you, I get 10, 10 asks a week on what are they doing? Where? And I'm like, I, I, I'm so tired of saying, I don't know. I don't know. You know?
So I was actually going to call her today and I, I forgot, I'll be honest. Um, I even have the message that I will call you tomorrow. Um, it was kind of about a different thing, but I was going to ask her about this as well. Uh, so yeah, I guess, and I actually asked him to reach out a week before that and he didn't get any response. So, but I am, I had a little bit of communication, nothing specific.
Oh, that's great.
But once we, once I hear, hopefully maybe next time I can say something. Maybe.
I haven't even seen her, cause often I would just swing in, you know, after she purchased the property, but I haven't seen her for a really long time down there.
Yeah. I don't know. On the last, randomly I'll, she's going in and out of there. Um, but.
Okay. That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, council member, Consalano?
Uh, I don't have anything except for, I had two people just mentioned that when they're listening to the meetings, that it's very hard to hear all of us.
Right.
So not when they're, when people are speaking, that's fine. It's just, I don't know. It's like all of us. It's just really hard to hear. So for the eye in the sky up there, if there's anything that we can do to get, I don't know, better microphones or something, I don't know. So when they're watching it on video, they're like, it's still hard to hear you guys.
Yes, we are, we are working on it. Okay. Maggie, say.
Yeah, I can do, I, I, so I, I received one quote and I just received a second quote just because I wanted a second opinion, um, last week. And so I'm hoping I can sort through both of those and we can get something going soon. It just took a while, um, to get both of those quotes back. And so definitely we need some improvements and hopefully we can get a solution soon. So I apologize it's taken so long.
It's okay. Should we put like a time on it? Like could it get an update in a month or something?
Well, so just before we go too far, remember we're talking about this building.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's thing one, right?
Yep.
Um, we don't want to update too much here in case we do sell the building, right? We don't know. We're waiting on, we're waiting on answers on that.
Yeah.
But and, and we're so in the beginning phase of, you know, but we don't want to spend a whole bunch of money upgrading all this. At the same point, we did talk about, um, you can get a big, huge, um, I don't know how big, but a big screen TV that's clear. That's going to be smaller than that, but it's going to be clear color. You'll be able to see it. The other thing too is nobody can hear anything out there. So you can hear our voice, but this is okay for the video, but nobody can hear us. And so she's just looking, looking at like a cost effective way that we can make this better temporarily. Or if, no, we're staying here forever. Let's go, let's do this better. So I mean, people sit here and they still can't hear us.
Yeah. If it's a lower cost temporarily, I think it might make a lot of people happy still, but.
For like a grand or two grand, you can get a big TV and throw it right up there. But then still we have, you know, so there's a couple of problems and she knows you're working on that.
Yeah. I'm trying to separate it out a little bit and, and anything that we would improve now, I, I'm like, I want to be able to use as much of it as possible if we were to move. And so that was kind of one thing I brought up with everybody. So, yeah.
I've seen some of the bit, she's copying me on this. So, but yes, let's get going.
That's all I got. All right. Um, I have a, a lot of stuff, but I think my computer's going to die here. So I'm going to go fast. Um, so local government aid, guess what we got this year? Zero. As planned. Um, and Jesse, maybe you can include this in the next meeting, but I, I mean, you should see the numbers on here that these other cities are getting. And, you know, this is a big issue a couple of years ago where, you know, we were getting 300, then it went down to 1, now it's zero, zero, you know? And, uh, uh, you know, they, they have some kind of calculation on how we get stuff and we don't. And me personally, I know I've been talking to our representatives, you know, at the state level. Um, you know, we, you know, city on the day, I know we're, or hill on the day, whatever it's called, we were down there talking about this as well too. But, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's, you go down there and testify for, for water needs and this and that, you know, we needed all this money. Um, not that that is what this is about, but it's like, we have one of the highest indebted cities in the county and, you know, we, we get zero. It's pretty frustrating. So anyway, I just.
Well, we need, we need to look at what are the, what's in the formula.
Right.
And how can we get the right numbers?
So again, I, I have talked to our state and senator and they know the problem, but in the course, if we have new ones next year, we should keep, keep on them. So pretty frustrating. But, and, and if you think about it, you know, so we, you know, now we got levy or franchise fees or whatever. It's like, we gotta make up, literally was it two years ago, we were at 350 grand LGA and now we have zero. Well, who's got to make that up? But remember, you know, was it every 75 grand is 1%, you know? It's a lot of money. So you talk about, you know, what we had to do with the levy last year and hopefully a lot less this year, but part of it's, you know, we're not getting that anymore. So anyway, frustrating. Um, uh, so the police are not here obviously, um, but they wanted to pass along just kind of a quick update. I think it's in the packet, but they had 130 calls for service in Mound from July 1st to the 31st. Um, no apparent up, abnormal uptick and trends. Um, we continue to be proactive center view beach, uh, surfside landing, uh, boat issue permits. Um, we've been watching through the late afternoons and early evening hours for the continued soliciting from door to door. We're catching a few without proper credentials, but most of the solicitors are, are obtaining proper credentials. Uh, Linwood Boulevard continues to be monitored for speeding drivers. Uh, we have sat on the road throughout the month and attempted to detour, detour vehicles from taking the shortcut over Shoreline Drive. There was an uptick in theft from motor vehicles in the past few weeks. We were trying to remind people to take valuable valuables in your house at night. Uh, all night shift officers are being proactive in the neighborhoods around the town. Officers have been on foot and on bikes, patrolling, attempting to keep thieves and burglars down. Uh, and then of course they just say, if, if you have any questions, please reach out, you know, anytime. I know we all got the email from, or, you know, the chief or you could reach out to Jesse and get a message over. Uh, well, I guess it was only me, but, uh, council member Larson couldn't make it, but we're, we did a fire department, uh, meeting again. We're, we're doing these like every other week just to kind of look at future opportunities for, um, you know, better service and potentially combining or whatever. But nothing, you know, we're just, just a slow slug of a process. But, um, the, did, let's see, yeah, Jesse, you're on the commissioner update with, was it Heather Edelson, our new commissioner? Um, we did a Zoom or a Teams or Zoom or whatever it was. Um, yeah, she seems, you know, ready to take it on. And, uh, right away I already gave her one to do. Um, if you guys know like West Edge, right? And you know, like the trail crosses over there. Um, so you know, Mounds like boom, trail crosses, Men Trust, uh, right by that my council property. Um, my, my big pet peeve, maybe I'm on my own boat, but is we just did the new one downtown, right? Right by Dakota, well, what used to be Dakota Junction, right?
Yeah.
We did that. We put a little sign, you know, stop here. Well, we did, this county did. We complained about for four years. They finally did it, which is cool. They put the, the, the paint down, that, you know, the, the lines we had to stop. I've biked that five or six times now. People are very, uh, good about stopping, you know?
With crosswalk, yeah.
Yeah. Cause now you put your bike just a teen, you know, an inch into the thing and they, and people do stop. Now if you're a foot back or two and you don't know what you're doing yet, people go, cause you, you know, you gotta kind of signal, hey, I'm trying to cross you.
Yeah.
Um, so. Um, so, I love the cross, that's good, I'm glad. We're looking into, you know, now, how do we get flashers there, uh, on top of that, but, uh, going back to the West Edge point, on West Edge over there, um, it's just old paint. It's, it was a crosswalk that never should have been crosswalked, and it's just a trail crossing, but the paint's trying to run out, and, and I didn't like the answer that you gave me originally. And they're like, well, you know, public, it was just like, well, we're just gonna let it kind of fade out over time, and I said, and the other thing too is, it's not even ours, it's Menetrisa's issue, it's like.
It's not a very busy county road either.
Yeah.
I mean, it can be at certain times today, but.
But I'll tell you, there's been, in my own family, a couple incidents where literally some kid just goes boom, right through, doesn't even stop. I mean, there's stop signs there, it's a trail crossing, but my problem now, it's an ongoing issue, is that now we fixed this other one, and it's actually, I think, smart in how we did it, but now this other one is opposite of what that one is. So do people know what they're even doing, and like, if this one says you have, you know, cars, you have to stop, this one says nothing about that, it just says trail crossing.
But on both of them, it says bikers should be stopping. I mean, there needs to be a double safety net, because
Right.
I think it's dangerous right outside of buyers. People still just, you know, go tearing through, because, I mean, you see the crosswalk, but I get concerned that, you know, like you said, people kind of hesitate when they're sitting there, should I go, shouldn't I? The car's like, well, are they gonna go, aren't they? So flashing lights would be helpful, but I think they should still put a gigantic stop sign on that trail too.
Okay.
So they're double.
Oh, on the trail side.
On the trail side.
Yeah, okay, so, that's my issue, is like, now that we fixed this, you know, one, and I'm about, and I'm gonna talk about the other one, that's gonna be fixed in a month. Now this one's kind of an issue, and again, it's not even our town, I get it, but it's like, it's, you know, you're coming into our town, and it's like, I want them to all kind of jive.
The, the other one on Lindale now, at the end of the Target, not Target, um, what is it? The one that, that the detour goes through.
Right.
Okay.
That doesn't have one either.
But that's really dangerous, because if you're coming down the road behind, uh, Tango Toys, and you turn up, your car, you know, you're on a hill, you're looking like this, you can't see
No.
the people on the side, on the trail, and the trail is kind of forested there, um, so the bushes kind of hide people as well, and so that's more dangerous.
Maybe you could have a conversation with Jasper over it.
We did, and.
Oh, you already did?
Well, they, yeah, so, so I, I just, she said, fine, I'm reaching out to our county commissioner, and so that's what we did, and, um, we'll see what happens.
We'll see.
Uh, but again, I, I don't care what every other town does, but in our town, when they come through, if one says cars must stop now, because we just updated for the county, you know, by Dakota Junction, they, they should both, I guess there's three of them, you know, that go through our town, I mean, I don't know, it's just like common sense to me, like,
Yeah.
you should really tell the cars to stop. I mean, at the end of the day, if someone hits someone on a bike, whether it's your, your right to go across or not, you're still, first of all, you're gonna feel like crap, second of all, you're gonna hurt someone, and you're probably still gonna lose in lawsuits.
The whole thing is dangerous with those crosses, it's, yeah.
So can you pull up my, uh, maybe the trail sign that I sent you?
Uh, I have like a few pictures from here.
Yeah, do that one. Oh, that's perfect. Okay, zoom into that. Okay, so Spring Park, and I know you guys are kind of working on this, but I just want to emphasize, that's what Spring Park says when you come into Spring Park, and I didn't take a picture of all, there's a whole other ones, but show, show Mounds. Yay, you, you're in Mound, come on. So I think we need to design a better one, and we need to work with Three Rivers and our Parks Department.
I can't see what, what are we looking at?
Well, it's, the city of Mound, it's just a teens, hey, you're in the city of Mound. You know, like, we should be.
We had that $80,000 sign when you come into Mound.
No, this is on the trail.
Oh, the trail, oh, okay.
So this is, this is probably what you guys should take up. I know you're doing wayfinding stuff, and maybe this coincidence is, is what you're gonna be talking about anyway, but.
It should be more welcoming.
Yeah, let's, and, and again, I didn't do the other ones, I, I didn't take, we went all the way to our colon back.
Yeah.
And there's a couple other ones that are just way better, so can we put that on the Parks to-do list and work with Three Rivers? Jesse, you write that down?
Yes.
And then show the other one with, uh, Dr. Carter. Okay, so, yeah, see, see on the bottom right, well, first of all, this is me with Dr. Carter, he's our Met Council rep, so Jesse and I had, uh, coffee with him, uh, this week, and so I said, hey, well, let's go look at, you know, because Met Council came in and did all this work, right, so I said, hey, let's go look at it together, and so the three of us went, went down here, and I see these pipes, and that, do you have the other picture of the pipe too? Real fast, and then we'll come back to that one. So these, this is, so you know, we're, we're doing this crosswalk, right, so when I ran four years ago in August, this is the first thing I said, all right, we gotta have a crosswalk there, we got blah, 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 right? Four years later, it's like, oh my God, finally, right? So these are the pipes that the wires are gonna come up, and then they're gonna put concrete in here, and then they're gonna make the, you know, the button that you push that signals, right? So then, can you go back to the other one? Anyway, I'm just super excited that I see those in the ground right now, so I'm, I'm geeking out a little bit. Uh, so then here, behind us, you can see the, the new curb line, right? Um, and then you can't really see it, but it's probably be, right behind my shoulders or whatever, is gonna be the crosswalk where it was.
What are we looking at? I don't even know.
15.
15.
Shoreline.
Coming around that curve.
Yeah, Shoreline, where Dakota crosses.
Oh, okay.
Artessa's to the left, back there.
Okay.
Um.
Oh, I see, okay, got it.
Yep, so people don't really see this, because it's blocked off, we walked over there anyway. Um, but anyway, this is gonna be, I think, the sidewalk where we're at, um, and this is the, the flasher, as you're coming from, say Speedway towards downtown or the park area, this is the first flasher that's gonna you know, alert you, hey, it's coming, and then the next one, that's where the button will be, and then there's gonna be a pork shop in the middle, and then, uh, you'll get, pork shop is like a cement thing, that kind of, you have a like reprieve, so you don't, you know, you have to run through four lanes of traffic, so, so this will come down into kind of a one lane and then come back out to two, uh, after this, so, anyway, I'm super excited. This, Jesse said, you guys had a meeting, it should be done by, by Labor Day, if no big rain or anything?
Yeah, September 6th is the date I saw today.
Okay, September 6th.
Flashes themselves though, or?
Delayed.
Delayed a little bit.
Yeah.
They're, they're gonna get temporary signed up, but they won't be.
Okay, now delayed as in?
Couple months.
Couple months?
Yeah.
Oh my God. But they, so they'll still go in this year yet, maybe?
They should, yes.
Okay. Okay, well, whatever, but at least, at least it'll be, will be closer. Is it backward on them, or what?
They, yeah, they just take a while to get ones that, they can't order them until the contracts are approved and.
Oh, okay, and just so you guys know, I just signed, you signed, we signed a lot of stuff here, so you guys sent me a thing that you signed, uh, the final, final contract, and that was just the other week. Um, the final, 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 final approval.
Yeah, they probably can release stuff before we're done with that. That was, that was like the cost agreement, or the, the cost sharing agreement, but I'm
Oh, okay.
guessing they probably have those contracts for the actual work.
Correct.
Either way.
Okay, well, so anyway, we're almost there. Uh, so the road should be back open by September 6th. We're hoping, okay.
Yep, they, they're hoping for Labor Day, but September 6th is the date.
They put in another few days just in case. Cool, and then that, all the detours and everything will, will be done with that, and they'll have a new, is it, it will be the final, final, or just the original?
Final payment will be done. Um, my council will still be working on the other, other town here.
Right, but this part will be. And there, are they gonna, you know, sometimes they do like an inch under.
It'll be all the way up.
It, it'll be done, so then we're never doing this again, I mean, for a while.
Never say never.
For a while.
That's great news.
Cool, all right, well, thanks for that. Uh, let's see what else. Um, National Night Out, that was August something, last week or whatever, uh, so I ran, rode around with,
The fire department or police?
Well, the police, yeah, um, one, one of the officers, and of course, we see, you know, other officers and
Yeah.
a fire, so they split it up into four different, uh, groups, and then each group went to six to eight different parties, so it went over by your, your neighborhood, they're having a whole big thing down there.
Oh, yeah, down at the end of Three Points, yeah. I went to the one on the, um, Phillips Island, um, Essex, and, um, give it, it's my brother's neighborhood.
Oh, good. Yeah, so it was a good, good time. I don't know, you, you put something on social, that's fine. Uh, let's see here.
I think next year, when we have our event park downtown, we should do a city one down in our new park.
Good idea. And let me just see if I have anything else here. Oh, uh, Artessa, got an update on that, uh, they're doing a grand opening, uh, ribbon cutting, uh, Tuesday, October 22nd, so I don't know if like the public, like, I don't know how big this is, but they asked, you know, what days would work and stuff, so it's looking like October 22nd at 1, I'd imagine, you know, all of us would be invited, so just kind of keep that on your radar. Um, oh, and then one other thing, Hanipin County, uh, our, our, our two commissioners voted against a, uh, a increase in, in, uh,
In their salary?
The salary, it was a 49% pay increase for themselves.
It started being 100%, and they
They worked it down.
They worked it down to 49, and then they backed out.
So that, so a, a few people, another mayor up north here of us, uh, shoot, shot this out to a lot of mayors, and I think there was a little bit of a uproar, and so, yeah, it was gonna go from 122,000 to 182,000 in 2025, 49%. Um, so anyway, it got shot down, so I will say thank you to our two commissioners for voting for our, you know, residents of Mound, um, uh, let's see here, what else? That's it, I think. Yeah, that's all I got. All right, uh, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
We've covered everything today, all right.
We should say congratulations, though, who are married, are recently married, city manager, city manager, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, next time, take a honeymoon.
Yeah, right.
How could I miss this?
Yeah.
So riveting, right? You could have been out on a boat, or?
We'll do something. Once it's cold, we'll do something.
All right, well, congrats.
Um, can I say one thing?
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to thank staff and the election judges, um, for the primary election, it went really well, so I just wanted to shout out to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for.
And I tried the new, that, that new voting machine, the one for people who can't see, like me. It was, it was really quite, quite interesting, because you have earphones on, and it talks you through the ballot, and, and then it's on a screen and you touch it, and then you, you touch it, and then you're, the paper ballot's on the side, and it fills it out for you.
Where do you vote at? What precinct?
I voted, um,
Jolastie?
Bethel.
Oh, Bethel, oh, no, no. Do they have that at each one?
I think they had it at H1, probably.
Cool.
It's a new one, so, you know, so instead of having someone fill it in for you.
Right.
You sit down and do it yourself.
All right, so if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
All right.
Second.
In a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we're adjourned, thanks.